Start the meeting and to remember silence our cell phones. Let's call up the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here.
Here. Okay, so board members just remember the microphones on the table are for at home. For the broadcasters one. We'll get a little feedback, so please try to monitor your movements. This young man's probably trying to mix it in to help us with the feedback right now on the gym speakers, but that's so that everybody in attendance today could hear us as well. Okay, let's start with recognitions.
So there is one recognition this evening. 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. An RB student has been named a semifinalist in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Over 1.5 million juniors in more than 21,000 high schools entered the 2021 competition by taking the 2019 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and approximately 16,000 semifinalists throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Congratulations to Jack Jamison.
And Jack emailed me he could not make it tonight. All right. Visitor's statements, where's Mendel? He's going to need to read. Okay, have your visitor.
The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor's statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent.
All right, do we have any? I think we had some people sign up for visitor comments. So if there's any in the crowd that want to come down. We'll start with this section to the right. Anybody on this side for visitor comments? Okay. There you go. So anybody speaking tonight, you have three minutes. I'll run a timer on the iPad. When I put my hand up, that kind of lets you know you have about 30 seconds to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Maria Kaplan.
Maria, you can pull your mask down if you want.
Oh, okay, great. My name is Maria Kaplan. My son is a sophomore here, and I'd just like to say a few things about the plan. If you're going to be interested in making any changes, just like to voice some concerns. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone. I think this current plan is going well with the amount of instruction time. It was increased from the previous one that you had, and I'm very happy with it. I think that it's adequate, you know, it's more than adequate, the amount of instruction time per week, so I'm happy with that, and I think, you know, my son is getting a good education from this. If there were going to be any changes, one thing I would say is possibly if you could have maybe the population split into like five groups and try to get students in the school once a week, so they can go through their classes once a week and meet their teachers, spend time with them, you know, chemistry class, learn some stuff hands-on, that would, I think, really, really help the students because while at home, they're getting a lot of education, you know, the instructions there, but just getting out and getting with the other students or getting with the teachers, maybe I think could help them a lot. Again, this is only if everything's healthy and our numbers are low in the community. I think it would be beneficial to the students to get them in at least once. I do want to say if we're moving towards fall and winter sports, so I see that there's kids here after school, there's clubs, there's activities now, and if it's open for all that, and if we're going to have some in-school sports, then I would really, really hope that we can try to get the kids in the school for education at least once a week with smaller groups. But I don't want to take that at a reduction for instruction time. I don't, I didn't like the other model where it was less instruction time to be in the school. I really, really like the fact that it's five days a week, seven classes a day, so they're seeing every teacher every single day, and they're getting help when they need it, so you don't have to wait two days to talk to your teachers again. So while I hope that everyone stays healthy and the numbers stay low, there's my other son's in the feeder school, the middle school here, and they are in school every day, two and a half hours a day, and then they come home and do online instruction also, and so far the numbers are still low. So if we can help the students get inside the school a little bit, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. We're going to do a presentation tonight, so we'll be able to have some information for him. Anybody else on this side? Okay, next section of bleachers.
I wrote something down. Thank you for giving me the time to talk. My name is Trish. I am an average mom of three average kids who I think are special. Once I heard that we were going to a hybrid plan for the fall, I saw a spark come back in my kids' eyes. The shutdown has been difficult keeping the kids from depression and anxiety. I'm a little nervous. According to WGN News Today, depression has tripled since the shutdown started. My youngest son has gone through bouts of depression and anxiety, and after years of speech therapy, starting when he was three years old, getting on a little yellow bus, his stutter is back in force and his confidence drops stately. I do appreciate the Zoom instruction. That's so much better than it was, obviously, during the emergency, but I feel that somehow the children have been lost. With my kids, we wander around town looking at empty football fields. We wonder why District 96 and other feeder schools can manage a hybrid plan. I ask myself how my son, who's now a senior, he's gone six months now with no prep for the SAT, and it's coming up, I think, October 14th. I can't imagine how his score will be better than it was during the PSAT with no prep, no school. I see my boys' anger and anxiety grow. I find a lot of focus comes to those that need it while those average kids like mine are being marginalized and left behind. I would like to get back to normal. The idea of extending this school shutdown even another day is devastating because I think my kids are special. And I think everybody's kids are. So let's consider that. Let's consider the average children who want to go back to school and consider their health and consider what's happening around us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the middle section? In this group here? Okay, third section? Okay, it's okay, just if you know, just when the next person comes down after that person, someone else can go.
Hi, my name is Ally Brand. I'm a junior here at RB, and I'm the current class president. I've chosen to speak tonight in front of you from the perspective of a student who's being forced to learn in an entirely remote setting. I'm involved in Student Association, Best Buddies, and I'm on the varsity swim and water polo team. Today, I would like to share my opinions on why we must switch to a hybrid model or a full-time in-person instruction schedule of learning for the benefit of myself and my peers. If the board, the administration, and the teachers decide to continue this remote learning experience, the mental health of all students is at risk. I personally have anxiety each and every day due to my Zoom meetings, cutting out, and missing crucial information, being forced to stare at the same screen for countless hours a day, and stressing about whether or not this remote setting will sufficiently prepare me for college entrance exams and higher education. Although I am incredibly grateful for a stable home setting to work in and my supportive parents, I still struggle. I cannot even begin to imagine how hard this is for the kids that are not as fortunate as me and do not have this kind of support at home. Public school is supposed to be about equal opportunities for all. Remote learning does the exact opposite. Being isolated in my room for several hours a day plus around two hours of homework genuinely makes me sad. I don't know another way to describe it. I've discussed remote learning with countless students, and we all have the same opinion. Although my teachers try to instruct us as best as they can, we aren't learning even half of what we would be if we were in person. The lack of socialization and seeing our classmates in person is taking a toll on all of my peers. Some students only interact with their friends during the school day, and e-learning is taking that away from them. I promise you, if there is not a change that is made with our current schedule of strictly remote learning, it will negatively impact all the students at RB. This will not only affect our mental health, but also our future students. I spent the summer working in retail, a cash-only business, interacting with thousands of people each week. It was important for me to do my job. I knew the risks and took the precautions, but I still chose to work. We can't be hiding away from our lives. We know the risks, and we will follow precautions for safety. We are only asking for a chance.
Thanks, Ally. Good job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma McVicker. I'm a sophomore at RB, and I'm a varsity swimmer. First, I'd like to thank you for letting us have our swim season. I honestly don't know what I would have done without it. Being able to
Keep talking.
Being able to see my coach, my teammates, and my friends every afternoon at practice and at meets has made this situation better. I also want to tell you how much I love my teachers. I have a different favorite teacher every day. One day, it's Mr. Beasley or Mr. Dignan. The next, it's Mr. Malquist or Ms. Gerald. Another, it's Ms. Ziola or Mr. Loeb, and the next, it's Madame Forberg. My teachers have also made remote learning better, but just because they made it better does not mean remote learning has been good. I want to share with you the difficulties with remote learning. When we had to switch to remote learning in March, I understood. No one knew much about COVID. No one knew much about how you could catch it. No one had the answers, so I did the right thing and stayed home. I did my schoolwork every day at home alone. I stopped seeing my friends, and I stopped swimming, and we all did the best we could and finished the rest of our school year. But we know so much more about COVID now, and so many schools are having in-person learning. I don't understand why we can't come back to school at RB. Why can't we and try and put all the things we've learned about COVID in place and come back to school? Remote learning is hard. Just today, I couldn't connect to the internet and for no reason at all. The internet was working, Zoom was working, but I couldn't get on. It's not the first time it has happened, but each time it makes me panic because I don't want to be late. My mom was there and told me to go to my hotspot, but if my mom had already left for work, I would have panicked. I shouldn't have to panic all the time about remote learning. This isn't the right way to learn. This isn't the way to have a high school experience. I feel terrible for my teammates that are seniors, and I don't know how to make it better for them, so I'm asking you to help. I want to come back to school full-time. I want to get the same educational time we are getting now. I want to be able to walk the halls at RB, sit in my classes, and see my awesome teachers in person. I know COVID is serious. I know we must be very careful, but I believe that we are mature enough and responsible enough to be successful at in-person learning. I understand the teachers are worried. I understand the parents are also worried. We are still worried ourselves, but let us show you we will follow the rules. We will follow the guidelines. Whatever you want us to do, please just give us a chance. We at least deserve a chance. Thank you.
Good job, Ellen. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kathy Dawn. I live in Riverside and have two daughters that attend RB. I'm talking tonight to make a plea to the board to start reopening the doors of RB to our children by October. I have another daughter who attends District 96 where she intends in person, and so far this hybrid option has been very successful. The only negative is that she lets me know that she wishes that she was in school longer. By contrast, my other two daughters feel completely different. They feel isolated, sad, uncertain, helpless, and frustrated. I'm here tonight as their advocate and hope that the board will be open to discussing the reopening of RB on existing and emerging data based on science and not politics. Where the efficiency of school closure is debatable, the potential for negative consequences keeping RB closed cannot be ignored. In 2003, when SARS spread in East Asia to more than two dozen countries, research has shown that school closures had little impact during the outbreak on stopping the spread. Today, a team of UK researchers modeled the COVID-19 intervention measures using data from Wuhan and found that school closures would prevent only 2% to 4% of deaths. While any loss of life is a tragedy, it is a war we are in, and a loss of life is unavoidable. Thus, the balancing regularly must be the not-in-school intervention method outweighed by short and long-term consequences to our children. The answer unequivocally is yes. Reopening RB may force some teachers that we love to make difficult decisions about whether to continue their jobs and risk exposure to the virus if they face the chance of illness. While the decision is complicated, the question of who decides if it's safe for the teachers to come back? What happens if RB says, "We believe it is safe," and the teachers believe it is not? How do we get this resolved? I'm not sure there is a clear system of process to answer this, but perhaps we have options for our teachers. Is it possible for RB to offer early retirement incentives or have teachers take advantage of FMLA for the remainder of the school year? Or create new roles and positions for the teachers who need to stay at home? It's heartbreaking the circumstances that our kids are faced with. We need to come together and advocate for our children to return to in-person learning. I know the teachers didn't sign up for this. I know it wasn't part of their description, but that was true for most of us in this room as well. We, as parents, go to work, we go to the store, we go to the doctor, and so do the teachers. The risk to our future generations far exceeds the risk to us to go back to teaching, to go back to work, so that our kids can thrive. Based on the foregoing, we owe it to our kids to have them back in school. My two daughters are going to come, so I just have a couple things that they wanted to say. So my oldest daughter, her name's Morgan, she's a senior, and she says, "I'm sorry that I couldn't attend tonight's board meeting. I work at La Barre and could not get out of my shift. This is not the senior year that I imagined. I'm trying my best to stay positive and make the best out of a situation that I cannot control, but each day it's getting harder. I'm asking and really begging to get us back into school. It's difficult to learn virtually, and I feel like I'm not learning what I need to do so that I can be prepared for college next year. I've started to get headaches every day from being on the Zoom calls, and it's frustrating." What's been positive for me has been able to be part of the girls' swim team. Although the season is cut short in time and more than half of our meets were taken away, I'm thankful that I was able to do something and be part of something my senior year. And then my other daughter's a sophomore, and she just said, she wants to say, "Thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm a person who doesn't learn well over the computer and gets sidetracked easily. I'm a person who needs to be able to touch and do things like science labs versus watching my teachers do them over Zoom. I know that we are all working hard together to make this bad situation work, but I'm ready and have been ready to come back to school. This past spring was hard to do with school getting shut down, especially on her. This summer, she was able to work at the pool, and being with her friends was the best medicine to get her positive again, and she asks to please come back to school."
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the third section? How about the last section? Anybody in that little last section? Is that it for visitor comments? One more? Okay?
Sorry, I don't have any notes here. I wasn't prepared for today's meeting. I just found out about it last minute. Did you need me to sign into this?
You can sign in after. It's okay.
My name's Matt Brown. I have a sophomore here. I just took a couple notes based on some of the stories I heard here. After this crisis, we had to require quick adaptation to something that was unknown and what affected us all. And as it started to unfold, we started to learn that there was two sides to how this can affect us. And after, since, well, since March, I think a lot of us learned that we had to quickly adapt to distancing and changing our ways, masking up, frequent washing. Even as today, the flu virus, they're saying, that usually starts about now, is even, has been lowered. With that being said, it seems that now we're at this point, you know, six months later, it almost seems like discipline to the community, to everybody, that nobody's doing a good enough job or working hard enough to slow the spread. There's not going to be stopping the spread. My personal opinion, it's going to be very hard to do something like that, but to slow the spread, we can't do good enough to get it to that point to appease our governor or whoever's in control, keeping these restrictions at a level that we just can't achieve, especially at this school. And we passed the peak, and at this point, I believe the families, the majority, as we voted for this hybrid model in the past, are ready to move on. We passed a good opportunity where there was the least amount of chances for sickness to come out at the start of the school year as we're moving into the fall and sicknesses are going to occur. That was a great test opportunity. But here we are at RB. We are all RB, and it's like listening to the family and the students speak that were pleading and begging for a right that we all have, that we all are ready for. And it's kind of sad to see that because it's like a victim impact panel at a courtroom where there's a heinous crime. We're ready. A lot of people aren't ready. A lot of people are still fearing. You offered the opportunity to them people, to them other students, them other families, for other solutions, remote learning. But the ones that are ready to come back want to come back. My neighbor's kid's stressing. He's exploding on his Zoom because he just can't handle the study in this manner. There's other students in the same manner. Fortunately, my daughter's doing well. I'm staying on her. I try to get her extra work. We're just trying to keep her doing twice as much within her tolerances so that when she comes back, she's not going to be slow to the regression to return back to school. With that being said, as the families and the students, much of the faculty, we're being kind. Nobody should ask permission. We're ready to go. We are RB, and like you, we want to return to school.
Thank you. Okay. Yep.
Soon as he's
Just let him.
Done.
Social distance. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Jen. I just wanted to speak to, I have a son with an IEP here at RB. I'm extremely grateful for the staff and all of the things that they're doing to try to help him as much as they can, but we're definitely reaching a point where his goals that are stated legally can't be met in a remote model. So we are trying to be as flexible and as patient as we possibly can be. We're very grateful for some of the staff that reaches out to us to try to help, but when we're in a remote model, those things just can't be met. So I would just encourage you to also think about that, that there are legal
Sure.
Things that are also, people are being so patient, and we're really doing our very best. And I, you guys have staff here and administration that love our kids, and I know that. We feel it. We know that. I think there just has to be compromise, compromises made on all sides, on our side, on staff's side, on administration's side. So I just really encourage you all to think about what are the compromises that you're willing to make so that our kids can at least have some small, and we're not asking for everything, just some small time at school. Thanks. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. You dropped your mask. Are there any other visitor comments? With that said, we'll move on to discussion items and COVID-19 transition. Okay, so I'm sure a lot of this will answer some of the questions that parents have brought up tonight. We have another presentation. Mary Ann, can you please go? I think it's 5074. So this is the, the Board of Education received this as well, parents and community. This is our second plan, a transition plan for in-person learning, starting second quarter through fourth quarter for the 2020-2021 school year. Inside this packet, you know, I wrote a brief letter, you know, to the board on why I feel, it's going to touch on a couple of things I think some of the parents and students said tonight. I think the first thing is, and I'm just going to highlight a few points, so please bear with me. At this time during the pandemic, I don't believe we can return to traditional in-person learning. I define in-person learning as students back on campus with teachers conducting normal classroom activities and traditional interactions taking place. That being said, I do believe there is an opportunity to provide the social-emotional interaction that students desperately, desperately need right now. Included in this document is a draft plan on how students can get back on campus safely and begin to have some social interaction that is essential to their development and well-being. Students would continue to learn on virtual platforms and would have an option to attend on their assigned date or stay remote. And the reason I want to highlight this first is, to the board, this plan that I'm going to discuss tonight and for the group in attendance and watching on TV, I want to make very clear, we're a while away before I can have kids come back on campus and do labs and do hands-on experiences, and teachers can move around and work with them in small groups. Just because of social distancing, where our staff comfort level, all these, there's a lot of moving variables. But that being said, I do think we're at a place, and I'm going to present some rationale tonight, of why I think we can at least have students starting to come back on campus second quarter, and we monitor that progress for a while and then see if we could add a second day. It all depends on how this will go, but I do think there is an opportunity for students to get back on campus. Since the start of the school year, many factors have changed, which I'm going to cover in this packet, and I think it makes bringing students back on campus feasible and practical. Parents and students are requesting these opportunities due to concerns about students' mental health and academic challenges. And as a district, I think it's imperative we come together to ensure all students have access to the social-emotional interactions that are critical, as well as the overall development and well-being for our students. If you go, Mary Ann, to the next page, which is the rationale, so there have been some things that have occurred, and I'm going to use both of these. Excuse me. Okay, number one, I'm going to cover, Kristin Smetana, the Assistant Superintendent, is going to cover tonight, but the IDP agencies in the Cook County Department of Public Health have developed a school matrices, and so there's six data points that we're now tracking on a weekly basis. We didn't have that back in August, so one of the concerns that came up with staff and some community members was, well, how do we know if it's safe, not safe? So we now have a school matrices with readily available data that every week is updated to tell us whether or not it's safe to be back on campus or if cases are trending in the wrong direction. We've had We've had over 400 students on campus first quarter. Some of our special ed classes have been meeting on campus. We've had athletics, activities, driver's ed, outside groups. So we've had students on campus already this first quarter. We've completed and experienced contact tracing. I'm sure people have seen in the landmark. We have experienced a case or two, both on the staff's side and on the student's side, where we've had to go through contact tracing. We had to quarantine students. So we have experience doing that, as well as working with the Cook County Health Department and their epidemiologists. We've implemented and established protocols in regards to improving the safety and overall airflow in the environment, whether it's extra cleaning staff, deep cleanings, increased airflow, temperature checks. And we have a quarantine room, PPE for the health office staff, one-way stairwell. So we've taken a lot of necessary precautions that would allow us to help get students back in the building. Let's see. We have a lot of local high schools that have also anticipated or announced their return. We had some of them start this week. We have obviously the private schools like Fenwick and Nazareth, Lincoln Way and Lockport started yesterday. September 28th, Lamont, Carl Sandberg, Andrew Stag are scheduled to go back in person with a similar model that I'm going to discuss tonight. Lyons Township announced that they're looking to start the first day of second quarter. Evergreen Parks announced October 5th. York High School has started, talked about October 8th. So I think there's a lot of schools. One of the things that came up in, back in August is that we were one of the last schools trying to still open and there were no other high schools doing it with the IDPH guidelines and all the concerns. So I think some things have, have changed and have improved to where I think, like one of the comments tonight is I think we're in a little better place than maybe where we were in August. And we still have a few weeks to get our bearings even under, under us more before the first day of second quarter. So the, what I'd like to go over next is that we still have some open-ended concerns. And Mary Ann, if you could scroll down. I know that's hard for the people in the audience to see, so I'm reading. I don't like to read to people. I know you can all read, so I'm just trying to cover them the best I can. We still will have to address some staffing issues. I think we will see an increase in some leave requests. We have some, we still have staff at an uncomfortable level. You'll see later in the survey that we have staff survey data that shows that they're not comfortable returning yet. We have, we're scheduled to fill our nurse vacancy by the October 13th board meeting. We still have to be cognizant of, the weather is changing, so that will decrease the opportunity to go outdoors. You know, cold and flu season will be upon us, so we have to take that into consideration. We're still working through some things with performance-based classes like wellness, choir, music. And then we, flexibility with the schedule. I've heard parents say they appreciate seeing their students, seeing their teachers every day. So one of the plans that will, one of the components of the plan we'll present tonight, we'll touch on that. Keeping the similar remote schedule we have now, but allowing students to come on campus one day a week. We, we, we do have to continue to improve our communication with families and make everybody understand that wearing your mask, practicing social distancing, the three Ws, you know, wash your hands, wear your mask, watch your distance. We still have to pound that home to all of our communities and families that it's going to take a group effort to get this done. But again, I do think that we should be able to come back on campus in some form second quarter. That being said, I think we have to understand tonight, Ms. Smithana's going to cover the matrices part. But that being said, if we have two weeks where there's an uptick in cases and we, we slide to that substantial side, we have to be prepared to flip to remote for two weeks, allow the case numbers to go back down in the area, and then we would be able to try to transition again back. So we have to understand as parents and people watching tonight, this is going to be a fluid situation. It's the same talking point I gave back in August, that we have to be fluid as, as, as things are thrown at us. We need to adjust and if we need to adapt, we will. Okay, I think those are most of the things. Kristen, if you want to address the matrices, if we could put those up there. That's the survey data, Mary Ann. We should be able to continue to scroll past it. If you want to touch on the survey data, I took the two primary questions that I know came up over citizen comments and through the board and through comments from staff over the last couple of months. So I made sure that Dr. Freitas had these in his survey. And that is just what is the preference for instruction second quarter? We had, after we weeded through any double responses, we had 898 families respond. Seventy-one point one percent wanted to transition to some combination of in-person or remote learning. Twenty-eight point nine percent want to continue with remote, just, just remote learning.
Yeah, can you put that on the screen if you're going to show, if you're going to talk about it?
Are we, are we doing the survey or the matrix?
We're going to the survey.
Okay. Mary Ann, could you put up the survey, please? Thank you.
It's the next, it's the next page in the, in the report. I'm sorry, Mary Ann. And then the other report was, the other question under the family side was if the district continues with the current model, which would be via Zoom or Google Meets, but provide students an option to participate in the classroom or continue to attend remotely, how likely would your student proceed? Seventy-five point five percent said attend on their assigned days. Twenty-four point five percent said attend remotely.
Mary Ann, could you go up a little?
That's still not the right side.
To students?
You're, you've got to go down, Mary Ann, to, to students.
No, no.
Other way. There you go. Okay, now for students, we had eight, 758 students respond. Their preference is seventy point seven to transition to some form of in-person learning. Twenty-nine point three continue with remote learning. And then with the question about if we were allowed, if we stayed on the virtual instruction, but you were assigned, assigned days, and that was a clean split of seventy-five, twenty-five. And then on the last page of survey data, we still have staff that is the opposite, on the opposite side. With their comfort level, the staff preference was out of 89 staff members that filled out the survey, seventy-six point four percent wanted to continue with remote learning. Twenty-three point six wanted to transition to some combination of in-person or remote. And in regards to their comfort level, and this is some, one of the challenges that I'm still working through with the staff, is this, how comfortable would you feel if the district transitioned to a model that included both in-person and remote learning following the school matrices published by the IDPH and Cook County Department of Public Health? Fifty-six percent said not comfortable. Twenty-five point eight percent said somewhat uncomfortable. And then we have roughly about seventeen, eighteen percent that said between comfortable and very comfortable. So we still have some work to do getting our staff to a level where they feel comfortable with, with students being back on campus. So I wanted to touch on the, the other spreadsheet that was in the presentation tonight was just a list of all the activities and things that are on campus and how many students are participating. I already touched on that briefly. And then Kristen will cover the school matrices, which are in the report. And that's the, Mary Ann, that's the page twelve of seventy-four, which should be the green, yellow, and red. Down, I think.
Keep going. One more page.
There you go.
So this is the matrix that is published by Illinois Department of Public Health in conjunction with Cook County Department of Public Health. It's very similar to the one that DuPage, Cook County Public Health has adopted as well. We have chosen to add a metric, which I will discuss in a minute. All of the data can be found by clicking that link. It says click here and selecting the school matrix. So I wanted to take a minute, if you go to the next page, Mary Ann, to show you what that looks like. So this is the data that I pulled today from the Cook County Public Health Department. And this is a tool that did not exist in August. Schools did not have the ability to go to one website and get all of these metrics and all of these data, in particular to their area, in order to make decisions. And this now exists. So I'll come back to this and, and we'll walk through exactly kind of where we're at right now. So probably makes sense, Mary Ann, to live in the other document. So as you can see, there are three transmission levels. There's a minimal transmission level, a moderate, and a substantial. And as you go through, you can go through across and see where you fall each week. RB has chosen to use suburban Cook County as a whole when reviewing the data. And so in doing so, if you were to go back to that other website, you would see that currently we are in a, a blue level, which means that we have very stable metrics and that in the last four weeks, we have been, suburban Cook County has been orange once. So that would put us in the moderate transmission for that section or that data point. Weekly suburban Cook County case rates in between fifty to a hundred per 100,000. And if you go back to that other page, you'll see this week we're currently at seventy-eight. So that again would put us in the moderate transmission category. The next data point is something that we have decided to add. In addition to looking at the metrics provided by IDPH and Cook County, we've also decided that it's important for us to look at weekly case rates for our local area, which we've defined as Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield, since those are our three biggest feeding towns. To do that, we look at a slightly different website. So Mary Ann, if you go down two pages, we go to the Northwestern schools. They have put together a database. And why we use this one instead, they're using the data from the Illinois Department of Public Health, but this website allows you to combine multiple zip codes into get one overall metric. So it, it does the work for you. So as you can see today, I pulled the information for zip code 60513, which is Brookfield, and 60546, which is Riverside and North Riverside. You can see the rolling average positivity rate is 2.73 for the last seven days. The number that we look at is right below that, so the weekly new cases per 100,000 is 73. So going back up to that metric, that would again also put us in the, in a moderate transmission category. The next, the next data point is looking at overall case number increases for two consecutive weeks. Currently, we are in the minimal transmission area based off the data that I pulled today, which is on the next page. Looking at weekly youth case numbers and whether or not that's increasing. Again, currently that puts us at the minimal transmission. And then the weekly test positivity for suburban Cook County, we are currently at 6%. So that would put us in the moderate transmission. And so this is something that we would look at, at, on a, you know, on a regular basis. But also I think it's important to note that the Cook County Department of Public Health has also made it clear that a change in county risk level designation does not mean that it would automatically impact schools in that area. So for example, if we were in moderate and, you know, we had, the county as a whole moved to substantial transmission, that does not necessarily impact RB. That could be due to a nursing home. That could be due to, you know, several other components. And so, you know, Cook County has, Cook County Department of Public Health has specifically said that. And so what we would do before we ever moved any transmission level is consult with the epidemiologist at Cook County Department of Public Health. This is also something that didn't exist before August. If it did, schools didn't have a contact. And so now I have a contact to an epidemiologist at Cook County Department of Public Health. I've spoken to her several times. She's incredibly responsive. I usually get a response within an hour. And so we would consult with her before we ever decided to move in this continuum, one way or another, whether it be positive or negative. We would consult with her to see exactly, you know, what are the reasons for, for the data points and whether or not it was appropriate to be moving levels. So I think those, all of this is information that, you know, again, didn't exist when we started school in August. And it's something that we would be using to drive our decision as to what instructional model or what percent of student enrollment we would be able to have in the building.
So if we take, thank you, Kristen, for that data. And I, again, it's readily available and it's updated on the Cook County Department of Public Health site once a week, every Wednesday. So we'll, we'll establish a folder on our COVID-19 page so that it will have each week's report. So we, community members, whoever wanted to check our website can see that printout. We're working on establishing that with our webmaster. So the last thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, last page, Mary Ann, of the presentation. And the board members have this on their Chromebook, so it's very small for the community to see. So let me, the red pillar or column is remote learning. We're in that right now, but the only time we would shift back to that is if we got to a substantial. And that's what it says on the bottom about substantial. After, anytime after first quarter, we would go back to remote learning. If we got to that substantial category where we had two of the last four weeks were in orange and there were some other factors in our area, the local area, that would be driving us to that decision. The two middle columns, which are in yellow, which are kind of like the moderate slash minimal, those would be kind of where we should see ourselves living for, hopefully for the second quarter and sometime into the third quarter. But you can see there's two things there. It says in-person at 25% and then in-person at 50%. The original plan that I'm, we have to still work through this. I've reconvened this, the learning subcommittee. It includes instructional coaches, teachers, administrators. We have one board member on there. We have some union leadership members on there, so we're trying to work through the act, what that actual model or plan would look like. But the, the idea would be that we would start slow by having 25% of the students back on campus. So how would that look? Teachers would continue to teach their virtual instruction on Zoom or Google Meets, but we would come up with an alpha slice breakdown so that students would at least have one day a week where they can come and go through their seven classes on campus. Now, they would still be participating via the Zoom or via the Google Meets. Now, that might be either watching it on the, on the projector in the teacher's room or actually participating through the Chromebook and headphones. But it would allow students to get back into that routine of getting up, coming to school, seeing some of their classmates, seeing their teachers, seeing a lesson be taught in person. Yes, that teacher would still be teaching it via the virtual platform, but it would provide students some of that interaction that they desperately need. Teachers would be on campus unless they go through the, the formal accommodation process with the district office. Lunches would be delivered or picked up, kind of like a grab and go. This is where the board needs to allow the administration some flexibility to work with the teaching staff and the subcommittee so that we can come up with a schedule. I'm not sure at this point if it's better to go through the full seven periods and have those 25% of students eat lunch on campus or if it's better to go to where, if, if you see the second yellow comment, it talks about eventually getting to 50% of student enrollment, but still doing the virtual instruction. I know this much. Once we get to 50%, until the guidelines change and some things change from the IDPH, we will not be able to provide lunches on campus. So the instructional day, we would have to go to 35-minute classes, do all seven classes. Students would go from like eight to 12:35 and then go home for lunch. And then there would be an opportunity for some virtual office hours, maybe in the afternoon, and some additional planning time for staff. So what I'm still working through with the committee is what's the best model to, to bring back this 25%? And so that's kind of where we're living right now. I don't see us getting to the green side, which would be 100% of students on campus for a half-day, until we've lived in that minimal transition level for several weeks. And there were some revised ISBE guidance, as well as at least some generation of a vaccine, the, the release of a vaccine. And then the second in-person, all the way to the right, which is in green, would be 100% of students on campus in a traditional schedule. I don't know if we'll get there this year. Again, this is a very fluid situation, but this kind of lays out how we can start slowly with 25% and follow the matrices and see how things are going with students on campus and then work our way towards 50%. And if things are going well, live in that 50% for a while and then slowly, you know, increase that, should there be some changes from the IDPH and the ISBE guidance. So there is a plan that we're working on. I know the board's been, you know, was adamant last meeting about having, you know, surveying the community, surveying the students, the teachers. So that occurred. We've shared some of that data. Dr. Freitas can speak to that a little bit to his, during his principal's report as well. I know there's one other thing that has, has come up in regards to winter sports. At this point in time, we have not started contact days for winter sports for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to get through our, our fall season and we're taking it one month at a time to see how things go with our fall season. Also, the fall season is, with the exception of swimming, are all outdoor activities, where the winter sports are all indoor activities. Now, with the exception of, I think, boys swimming and diving, everything else in the winter is medium to high risk. So the only way that we'll be able to do winter sport competitions is if the IHSA or the IDPH allows that under their current guidelines of low, medium, and high-risk sports and activities. I know a lot of parents have asked about that. The administration has not provided any recommendation to the board and the board has not made any decision at this time on whether or not we would be running winter sports or camp. sports or canceling winter sports. So I want to, if there is that rumor out there, I want to make sure people understand, we've told our coaches we'll update them October 1st and we'll do it again November 1st. I think our, the official start date of the winter season is November 16th. I will say this, I think I heard a parent mention this earlier. We can't put the cart before the horse. I understand, social, emotional, and I understand kids are looking for some line of engagement, some type of hook back to the school and seeing their classmates. And I understand the athletics and activities are serving as that venue right now while we're doing this remote learning. But our focus as a board and administration and as a community should be figuring out first how to get kids back on campus to start engaging in some learning activities. And as, and that, once that starts going successfully, we should then be more, then we could worry about the winter sports. But I do think our focus at this time, if we have to work through some things with our staff or work through some things with community members to get everybody on board with this plan, or at least accepting that we're moving forward with this plan, I think that should be our priority before we would worry about athletics. But we are not at any position at this time where a recommendation has been made to cancel any sports or hold out on any sports until people are back in person. Right now, we're trying to figure out how to get students back. And it basically resembles what the parents and the students who spoke tonight, like figuring out some way to start getting kids back on campus at least one day a week. So that was kind of a quick snapshot. I'm sorry if I was rushing through a little bit. There was a lot of information to cover, but I feel like we've, you know, it's almost like Groundhog Day. We lived through this in August again. We've made some modifications. We're relying more on some specific data that the IDPH and the Cook County Department of Public Health have put out. And again, like I stated, we're testing, we have some students on campus. We have over 400 students participating in different activities and athletics who are spending some time on campus. So I do think we're in a better place than where we were in August. I'll open it to questions.
I think the, I think the community came to tell us what they think. The survey data speaks for itself. Doctor Spintana's data matrix tells us it's safe. So I would expect this to be in an in-person learning in some form or fashion at the second quarter, which is October 18th.
19th, I think. I'm sorry.
October 19th.
I am strongly in favor of getting the kids back into school. I think they've suffered long enough between last year so far this year, and we need to do something for them. As a community, we need to compromise. Not everyone's going to be happy. We understand that. You know, we don't intend on making people angry or bitter, but, you know, we look at the majority of the responses that we've received, and it's all been get the kids back. And let's do it.
When I'm hearing this model, it's still, there's a couple of things that are bothering me. This is our board discussion. This is, I mean, it was a great presentation, but now it's time for us to discuss this. Again, the grocery store is not open one day a week. You're not getting your UPS, Amazon packages one day a week. You're not going to the restaurant one day a week, seven days a week. Our kids are, not our kids, our young people are working in restaurants and they're not working one day a week. And here we are talking about school one day a week. Our elementary school kids are not going to school one day a week. The plan is being driven by faculty who have shown they're uncomfortable coming back. Now, I don't know if the same faculty don't go to the grocery store and they get everything delivered, and they don't use any fast food. I don't know that. But I do know this community is out and about. Alls they got to do is stand on the street in the middle of the day. They're out and about. All the restaurants are full, the grocery stores are full, the parks are full, people are out and about. And so I think we've regressed in this model. I understand we got to come back slowly, but I think we've regressed on the model, the hybrid model we approved. And I think we need to push it a little more. I'm not happy with this one day a week, 35 minutes rush to your classes. I don't think that's adequate. I think that day would be a waste.
I just really wanted, I am also in favor of bringing the students back. I want to thank everyone who filled out that survey. I spent almost three hours yesterday reading through all the survey comments. I want the students to know who filled out, I think there were seven pages of student comments, that I read every one of them. A lot of them were really heartbreaking, that if you're a student and you're hating school and you're having issues, difficulties, I just want them to know that we read them, we heard them, and that I do encourage students and parents, if you think something is up with your child, we have lots of social workers and counselors here at RB. Please reach out to the school because we do ultimately want to make sure that all of our kids are okay. I am, though, in favor of bringing kids back. I think that it's time.
I'd like to share, my daughter is in a liberal arts college, small liberal arts college in Iowa. The college made the decision to bring the students back. The students had a buy-in. They are now four weeks into their, into their school year. They've had 16 cases. They have a nice robust model. If you think you're exposed, they have a couple townhouses set up, students self-report, they got tracing, contact tracing. Students are told weekly by the dean that you have to buy this, you have to buy into this, you have to own it. Our goal is to see you walk for those who are graduating. Those students who have lab classes, they alternate, and they have half the students in lab one day, then the virtual lab. My daughter, who's a nursing student, says it's fantastic, getting a lot of attention in the lab on deck. The deans have told them, pick your tribe, stay with your eight people, eat with them, talk with them, socialize with them. That's who you visit, that's who you hang with. And they are buying it. They're buying it so well. The people in the community, the community has supported the college. They threw the kids a coffee crawl on a Saturday morning, just to really encourage them to keep it up. We have to live with this virus for all of us who are working daily and have been working since day one. As an essential worker, we wear the protective gear, but we are out there every day working with this. And our students are saying they're ready. In fact, our students are working with it. They're in our restaurants and our grocery stores. Our students are taking the risk our own staff are not taking. You know, we got to do better. That's my biased opinion.
So I think it's important to also mention the faculty and the teaching staff, some of which I now experience through, you know, more by happenstance, but I think you can all relate from what we see in our homes. We have incredible teachers here at RB, and from everything I've seen, they've done an incredible job. And so I think we have to be just mindful that as we talk about the issue and we look at the survey and the numbers are so disparate, right? We're really far apart. But the story is pretty clear. I just think as a starting statement, I would like to just make clear that we appreciate what the teachers are doing. From what I see, they're incredibly innovative, positive, enthusiastic. They're doing what they can, and we appreciate that. We also, you know, as Gina was saying, we see the comments from the students. We also have heard many comments from the teachers, and of course, they're legitimate. This is about health and safety, and we hear those. And I can't speak for my board colleagues, but I know from all of our discussions, we have always been very open about saying, within the limits of what's possible and the law and existing contracts and so forth. But of course, we are open to listening to that and trying to accommodate to the extent possible. Now, having said all of this, I actually really appreciate Laura's comments in that, you know, when we have to, and now that the data is so accurate, I think it's really remarkable how, when you just look at what's happened over these six months, from, yeah, what's going on, we just have to pull back, to now the fine-grained nature of the data, which allows us to react with a similar level of refinement. The pulling back is never a question. You can always, you know, from one day to the next, you can say, we're going to go back. I agree with Laura that why can't we do a similar approach on the other side? So when I see the 25% model, maybe that's for a week, maybe for two, because I can see that there might be reasons to ramp up and test and how do people get in this? You know, that's totally legitimate in my mind. But I think the point that we had a hybrid model, it was based on 50%, and sort of now to sort of weigh, I mean, I agree with that point. I think we should be, we should have the courage to move faster to going to getting students on campus. And we all know, we can always come back very quickly, but we shouldn't be shy about doing it the other direction as well.
So a couple of comments on the survey itself. I was really pleased to see the high level of participation from all three groups. I know there was a flurry of prods to get those done, and I think when you see so many comments from families and students and staff, you know, we're all equally engaged in this decision. This is not, there is not a black and white answer here. There's a lot of compromise that we're talking about, whether it's 25% or more. And I think it shows that in this whole crisis, it's all about the grace we give each other, right? And so I think a lot of what we're seeing in those comments from the students, the faculty, and the community are about their individual concerns, and they're very real, very legitimate. Excuse me. I do think that one of the things that's shown through for me was the real positive comments on the enthusiasm for the teachers and then the communication from the administration. I think there's a clear improvement in terms of how people are getting information, how they're understanding this is a situation in flux. I think that was, that's really come through strongly. And I think one of the things I would like to know is, you know, if we were compromising on this side, we're looking at different options, can we drill down further on the staff level? What are they really looking for? Are there certain things that we can do for the staff to help make them more comfortable? I heard some comments about dual monitors. I know there's some discussion about Zoom upgrades. There's those kind of technological, fairly modest dollar investments, and we should be looking at those. But what else, right? Besides FMLA and ADA and sick time and those contractual HR options, what else can we be doing? So I'd like to hear some more on that front, too.
Okay. And that's what the committee is working on, and I did send a separate email to the union to ask for some information so I could find a way to work it into the plan or model. And so that's why, Laura, I know you talked about the 35 minutes. Our current classes are 40. The teachers and students have all mentioned they appreciate seeing their teachers every day. When you take out the lunch in 10-minute passing periods and go down to five-minute passing periods, and five minutes off of each course, we can pull that off and have an easy transition at whatever point that is to go from 25 to 50. If we have to go back, we can't. So you don't want to have a different schedule for each model because that creates confusion and chaos. And so the big piece where the highest risk is, is students taking their mask off for lunches. And so we really have about a four-and-a-half-hour window from 8:00 to 12:35 because after five hours, I have to provide employees a lunch. And I think asking students to go longer than five hours with no lunches is also a problem. So we really have about that four-and-a-half-hour window, which is why I have to have some flexibility from the board to modify the schedule to make this all work.
Well, the comment there, Kevin, because it's only one day a week, there'll be time lost in the novelty. But if they were doing that every day, the 35 minutes would be sufficient.
Well, so just so to make clear that the model, so that you, so everybody understands, maybe I didn't touch on this, I apologize if maybe I was going too quick. What a 25%, and at whatever point we get back to 50%, the other 50% are at home watching that exact same lesson that a teacher is teaching virtually. So those families and students, that 30% that don't feel comfortable coming back, we don't have the two models of the apex in the in-person, and it's everybody living in the same model. So really, whether you're at home or, and the reason why I like this model, parents, if your kid's feeling a symptom and we come back second quarter, stay home because you're not missing anything, because you're getting the same lesson that if you were sitting in that class, you're getting the same lesson being at home on the Zoom. And so we don't have parents like, oh, this is your only one day to see your teachers. Don't tell anybody you've got a sore throat or you got a, like, we can't afford that right now. So by setting it up this way, parents don't feel, or students don't feel like, you know, if you're not feeling well or you're experiencing symptoms, it's safer to stay home because you're not going to miss anything. Attendance is still going to be taken virtually, not in-person. So I think there's some things that we've learned since August that will make this easier for everybody to adjust and start to get a level of, some comfort level to being in-person and having people on campus.
So my thought is, if we kept with the, if we're doing the remote, we have 25% of kids come in to the school one day a week, we would keep that same schedule. Can they just go off-campus for lunch? I mean, is there all 14, 15? I mean, my kids are going out playing basketball at lunch.
Right. So that opens up a whole nother level for that 25% of going off-campus of some liability insurance things that we would need to take into consideration, right? So if you open up the campus and four 15-year-olds get in their alpha slice and then someone gets in an accident because they had an open campus lunch, there's some, is some liability with those things that we'd have to run through our attorneys. The second thing is, is if we're talking about monitoring this 25% to a point to where then we go to the 50, we're not going to be able to have 50% on campus for lunch, even if we open up that campus, you know, right?
No, but if, but to your point of keeping the schedule the same, you would keep the schedule the same as it is today for the 25%, and then on the 50%, we go back to our original thought of what we had discussed in August.
The August plan is, at this point, I would say, unless the teachers and stuff come out back to us, I think we have moved to a point to where we feel the seven-period-a-day schedule is better than the August plan because kids are, teachers are able to see their kids and kids are able to see their teachers every day of the week, where in August, it was every other day. So I think we've gotten some positive feedback from teachers and students that they appreciate seeing their teacher every day of the week. The other piece of that August model was there was still some of those concerns of teachers having to teach to the block. The third piece of that is, and at any time we have a spike and we have to go back to remote, again, we're trying to keep consistent. So if it's following the same schedule that everybody's on remote learning on Mondays, and then when we're in-person, 50%, it's a similar thing, but some are at home and some are in-person. And then in two weeks, oh, we have an uptick in cases, we have to go back to remote, we would shift back to the remote plan, which is trying to keep one consistent schedule for all those different transitions.
So the reason why then it's 25% is because they're going to run through, so we're really only having four days of students in the building?
Four days of students in the building. Mondays would still be all remote, 40-minute classes currently like we're doing now. What a lot of schools are doing is the Wednesdays off. So they have kids on campus Monday and Tuesday, no one on campus, remote learning on Wednesday for, to deep-clean the building, and then kids come back on Thursday and Friday. That's what like a lot of the private schools are doing, where they have kids full day on campus, they go for two days, they're off for one day, everybody's remote, and then they go for two days.
And then 50% would be two days?
Right.
Two days, and you run through your seven classes, you take your lunch and go home?
Correct.
I mean, in my biased opinion, we got to get to that 50%. Maybe we take a week to run through the 25, and then we got, I mean, two days, you're talking two half-days. Another question I have, and this wasn't on the screen here, and it was in the survey results that you sent us. I'm concerned with the virtual hours. According to the survey results that we got from the packet, 40%, only 40% of students are saying yes, the teachers are being responsive during virtual office hours.
No, I think, I think you're reading that wrong. I think the...
Well, it's blue. Blue is yes, 40.5. Are teachers being responsive during virtual office hours?
Yes, the 57.9 said NA means they haven't taken advantage of office hours. So that one little red piece, which was less than 1%, I thought, was kids saying no, that teachers weren't being responsive.
So that bothers me because that means the whole afternoon, so that our students, similar... similar to what was happening between March and March through May, our students are just checking out. They're not taking advantage of it. And we had talked about teachers, if the students are not coming in for virtual office hours, that the teachers may reach out or try to get a group or discussion. So what's happening is, as soon as virtual learning is over, they're done.
Well, I, I think, I, I can't speak to what a parent or what a student's or what, but I know that we have had some teachers do work groups and makeup groups and some things during virtual office hours. I can't force students to take it there, but the teachers are staying on campus to use it. So if kids aren't logging in, or if teachers aren't being responsive, we haven't fielded a lot of complaints or concerns that teachers aren't available, whether or not students are just checking out at, and that's a long day for students. If you think about it being on the computer from 8:00 to 2:30, the last thing they want to do is maybe another half-hour, unless they really need it, or they're being forced by a teacher, because they got to make something up. So I can't force kids to take advantage of the office hours. If we went to the reduced schedule of the half-days, I was going to increase those office hours from a half-hour to an hour, so that if the, a teacher needed to give a makeup quiz, a test, or run a small group for kids that are struggling, there's time for intervention. So, in one of, you know, as we're working through some feedback from the staff, instead of just calling a virtual offer, office hours, it could also be virtual intervention as well. Again, we're still in the early phases. We've had one meeting where we've discussed this, and a majority of that meeting was kind of just trying to figure out, you know, what the staff is looking for in order to get behind the plan.
I, I would say on the, on the office hours, some of the comments were very interesting on that front as well. I think there was, the, the 50% of the students who are using it are really valuing the, the additional feedback, and for whatever reason, the other 50% are not. I mean, I can only speak for my three, and they, they have not. So, but it's, it's good to have that opportunity there. It, it seems like it's a very good option, when you're not doing your homework, or you're not walking the dog, to, to use the office hours. Maybe we need to encourage that, and make sure people are aware that it's an opportunity.
And I just quickly wanted to add, you know, the staff, you know, has, has been available. If you saw some of the comments, they're very positive that they're responsive. You know, you just have those learners, that are advanced learners that don't need, and then you have those students that do need the extra support. But the staff have been present, and they have been very supportive, you know?
Yeah, I would say that many students, like me, for example, I would maybe go on virtual office hours on a Wednesday, and then other two days, I'm just spending my time doing homework on my own. I don't need it every day, but when I do need it, I use it. And some students don't need it at all. Like, even when we do have school, they don't come in after school for help, because they don't need it. So I don't think that it's, I think it's really beneficial, and I think we should keep it.
Michael Lilly, before Ms. Toward gives her, she hasn't had an opportunity to speak, but if we go around the table, I mean, you haven't had an opportunity, what are your thoughts on what you've heard tonight so far, from a student's perspective?
Okay. Well, I definitely think we need to get students back in school. I've been a supporter for this from the start. Michael has too, most of the student body has, you can tell from the survey, and all the students who spoke tonight. Good job, guys. And I re, it's really important. Screen fatigue is a huge thing happening. We are on Zoom for way too long, every single day. And I am a student who does need additional help a lot, but I find it that, sometimes I don't want to go to the office hours, just because it is too much, just for everything to be online. And, like, I am in a sport right now, and I know that everyone else who's in a sport, there's boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls golf, girls swimming, and girls tennis running right now. I know that's just a really great outlet for the students, that's allowing them to meet with their friends and have some time away from the screens. But the students who aren't in sports right now are being deprived of that, and they're just stuck in their houses, doing hours of homework that is online, after they are on their Zooms for the whole school day. So, we really just need to make an effort to get students into the building. All the surrounding, a lot of surrounding schools are getting their students back to school, and I think RB should too. But it's clear there's a huge disconnect between the student body and the Riverside Brookfield community and the teachers, which really pains me, because I have never met an RB teacher I haven't loved. I think that the teaching staff here is amazing. But I really think they need to come around, because, I mean, they were hesitant, very hesitant back in August, and they're still not giving up. They're very persistent in not wanting to bring students back to campus. But I really think they need to see that everyone around them just really values in-person education, and it is a top priority.
I also wanted to say that the staff numbers, I think, for survey-wise, should still be higher, because I know many of my teachers still would rather be teaching in class. Student numbers, I also like that that went up, and Dr. Freitas sent many reminds, so that has nothing to do with Dr. Freitas sending out communication, that's just students not choosing not to reply. Also, I would like to come on to social workers and counselors, because I've been getting an email every week, if, saying, if you need any help, let us know. So I think they've been doing a good job. And even teachers, I think, like, three of my teachers have been doing weekly surveys to see how we're doing. So I think that most of the staff is really keeping our social, emotional health in mind.
That's good to hear, Michael. Thank you, because I think sometimes that gets overshadowed with all of our other discussions. So thank you for bringing that up.
Kristen, if we could go back to the matrices for just a second, you said that, and I, maybe I didn't, I don't know, I wasn't registering yet, or whatever, you said, one is updated once a week, but then one is updated daily, or someone is updated on a Wednesday, or what was that?
The Cook County Department of Public Health, which is where six of the, of the primary matrices that we will be using, is updated every Wednesday.
Okay.
So they, the data is collected Friday through Sunday, and then they update the actual stats on Wednesday.
Okay. So, but there's, so, but we can check numbers daily, somewhere? Yes? No?
You can check the local area, I think, from the Northwestern, but I thought that was a seven-day. They have the, over the last week, the number of tests and cases and positivity rate. But yeah, so you can check on the Northwestern site, the zip codes daily.
Okay.
For the local area.
Right. Okay. So we have...
But the, the, the Cook County matrices wants you to use a larger area, because just like everybody has stated tonight, it's not just like people from North Riverside stay in North Riverside.
Right.
And so that's why it talks about the surrounding area. So using a much larger, larger area, so you can keep track of the positivity rate, cases per week, et cetera.
Sure. And I mean, we are, like, we are surrounded by data all the time, right? Like, we have our watches, we have our phones, we have, and again, thank you to everyone that's here, that, and not here at home, that filled out the survey, right? Because before the weekend, we only had a few hundred responses, and maybe thinking that we weren't having a good cross-section of the community participate. But I think that we can now surmise that we've heard the community loud and clear about what they want, and this board is committed to, and I think we've said that all along, right, to finding some sort of in-person solution to get things going again. As literally the card-carrying member of the IEA on this board, I've struggled a lot this weekend with what I've read, what I've heard, what I've, what, what's happened, and I just really want to encourage my fellow association members to come to the table, be part of solving the problem, not problem. Please come to the table with good ideas. More heads are better than one. We are committed to having an in-person model, and we want your input. But if you're going to dig in and not give it, then we're going to move forward with a plan. So, please come with some ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, if I can just, what Deanna said, because I attended that committee meeting, and that was one of the questions I asked, is, I think it would be really helpful for the board, for us to just get more information on what would make the staff feel more comfortable. So I think that that is a missing piece of information that is critical, that we need to have. So I would just encourage you to try to get that information, because I think that that will help us move forward. And then the other question I have is, even if we do have 25, 50%, whatever the percentage, I'm sure that there's going to be families who still may say, because of a health circumstance, or whatever, who still may say, no matter what you do, I'm going to keep my child home for remote, you know, for the following reasons. I think we need to get those numbers. If it's 20%, if it's 30%, if it's 5%, because then that's going to affect how you guys are going to be able to run lunch, like, all, if, if lunch is, you know, an option. But I think we do have to get a firm answer from parents, because I think that there may be some out there that are like, no, due to a, a health concern or whatnot.
Well, yeah, and I, I do, I think that would be the third, in the next two weeks, that'll be the third survey that Dr. Freitas sends out, we'll have that question, like, for more of a hard commitment. But I would anticipate, we're anticipating will be between 25 and 30%.
Yes.
You know, because, I mean, it was 25 for attend on your assigned days, and it was closer to 30% for stay remote, uh, do a combination.
And what were the numbers back when it was Apex? That was still 20%. So it's been...
It's fairly consistent.
Really consistent, yeah.
So I think, so I think we, we, we would like the, the board, correct me if I'm wrong here, right, on the next board meeting, October 13th, we'll have a plan for an in-person learning for 25% starting October 19th, that Tuesday, with, with a projected to move to a 50%, you know, in a couple of weeks, by November 3rd. I think that's something we would want to look at.
Yeah, again, I think we, we can set that goal of the, to get to the 50, but we have to continue to follow the matrices. So if the data's moving in the wrong direction, I don't want to jump us to 50, so that in a week later, we're back to remote. I think we need to manage this one week at a time and watch the data, which, which we have something to manage, or watch.
Let's talk about on 13th, what that matrix looks like, right? Because I think that'll give you time to put it together with...
Right.
With professionals, and, I mean, you, you guys are the ones that tell us how to do this, but...
I think what I'm trying to...
The community's saying, we, this is the way we want to teach our children. And I, I understand the union's point, but, you know, and we love and respect our teachers, but we love and respect our children more. I mean, this is, this is what...
Yeah, I think as a board, right.
We're in charge of educating our children.
I think as a board, we owe it to the community to say, this is what we want, assuming no spike, you know, no anomaly in the science or the data. And I think, you know, it's being driven already by a staff that has said, they've dug their heels in, and said, we're not comfortable coming, and it's, everything's being driven there. And we're, we've been begging since July, tell us what you want, and you have all the protective gear that nobody else gets, an OSKO jewel anywhere else, we're going to help you try to make this transition. Students, we have students begging to come in here. And I think as a board, you know, this is our meeting, this is where we, as a board, say, we need to see this happen, and we need to tell admin, ask administration, you got to make this happen. I don't know if we need to start hiring out, or looking, what are the cases? I mean, do we need to start looking at legal? What do we need to do to start moving in that direction? As a board, are we going to say, this is where we want to go? Because this is what the community's asking us to do.
It's what we just said, this is where we want to go.
As we, right, as we sit here right now, right?
Yeah.
In this situation, we represent the voice of the community.
Right.
Right?
We, you know, sans the fiduciary responsibilities that we have, but in this situation... Right.
We represent the community. They have overwhelmingly filled out the survey, yes?
Yep.
They, and so have the students, and they have overwhelmingly told us what they want, and now it is absolutely our job to carry that out.
So we have to ask administration, if you're moving in that way, what does administration need? Do you need to come to us and say, we need to hire new people, we need this, we need, I don't know what that looks like, if...
Right.
We have staff that said, we're not going to work, or whatever, we're going to retire. I don't know what that looks like, but we need to move.
Right. And, and I think that was the purpose of asking a board member to be on the committee, so they can hear that loud and clear.
Okay.
A lot of those questions were asked. We're waiting for some feedback from the, the teachers and the teachers' union that was represented on the committee, or what are some things they're looking for in the model that will help their staff be more comfortable. We asked that question on Friday. We also sent a follow-up email, so I'm sure we'll get something back. What I'm laying the groundwork for tonight is, I don't want to come back on October 13th, because I, I think Gina will tell you, I made very clear to the, to the group, that we're putting together a plan, and that we would like to have their hand in developing that plan. But either way, a plan's got to go forward to the board, because that's what the, the board represents the community, and that's where this is going. And that was, that was stated clearly. And so what I'm saying to the group tonight, for the board, is, there needs to be some flexibility. Like, I understand, like, when you say you're frustrated about the 35 minutes instead of 40 minutes, if that's what it takes to get over the hump, then I think we got to put that in place. Like, there has to be some compromise, there has to be some flexibility, until we can get people back on camp, campus, and everybody's comfort level gets to a place, just like with remote learning. We're required the staff to be on campus for remote learning, we heard some hem and haws with that, but now they're in a good place. If you look at the positive things that were in that survey data from parents and students, they're doing a lot of good things. And so I'm thinking, you know, the same will happen as we move on with 25%, and we put a flexibility in that schedule, so they have some additional planning time, and students don't have the screen fatigue. And I'm hoping after a few weeks of 25% and the data being in the right direction, we can move to 50%.
And I'm okay with all of those, as long as we move. But if we come back in two weeks, and we're still saying, well, we're going to do it, that's not okay.
Well, so, we have, we, we also have a planned meeting with the RBEA Executive Committee before the 13th meeting. We're working on a timing issue, whether it's 6 o'clock or 5:30, or, that's really what we're working on now, but...
Yeah, so, here's, calendars open, are early, coming early on the 13th.
It's probably more than an hour.
But can we expect the 25% in two weeks? I mean, other schools are starting to go October 1st.
Sure. I, I understand that.
Well, we, but Laura, we need time for a good plan, right? Like, we also don't want to just say, okay, we're starting tomorrow.
Well, that's not tomorrow, we're talking two weeks.
No, I know, but, I mean...
Three, three weeks. What's the, the 22nd? We're, we're talking three, almost four weeks.
Some, some things that have occurred, so you can understand, we, we were working with our special ed department to get students on campus. It needs, as you heard in that citizen comment tonight, there are some special ed students, there are some intervention programs that are going on, on campus. As the student board advisor mentioned, we're working with our counselors and social workers. We have had some classes, have students show up for a class, and then they spend the time in the designated area, working with the rest of their classes online. So we are working through this. And I, you have my word, that I'm working on this plan. My, my own kids are in attendance at their school, so I believe in students being back on campus. I have to get the staff to a place where we can run school.
But that's four weeks away. If we don't say, we want to have a goal, I mean, how many weeks do we need to get to 25%? That, that's four weeks.
That's the second quarter.
That's the first day of the second quarter.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
So we originally said we were going remote for the first quarter, so now we're saying we're starting the second quarter in person. I think that's kind of keeping with the timetable we laid out for the community when we made that decision back in August.
So I think we need to kind of, kind of set, put a line in the sand and say, you know, unless something goes wrong with the science, there's an outbreak, starting second quarter, we expect to be, what is that minimum threshold? I mean, we, we keep pushing, we keep pushing it and pushing it. And the, the community can hold us accountable, and we need to hold administration accountable.
I understand.
Because we'll, we'll become the last school to go.
No, I understand that loud and clear. And I think Mr. Smithing said it, he, when he originally opened that, he didn't want to speak for the board, but he said he expects to see some type of in-person learning taking place, kids on campus, first day of second quarter. And that's, that is our target date.
And I did want to add to all the listeners and to the board, we do have three meetings coming up. We have an executive meeting with the union tomorrow. We're meeting Thursday with the instructional coaches. And then Monday, we're having a faculty meeting. So we're committed to this plan, we're committed to, you know, bringing students, that we're just going to have, you know, more meetings and more conversations coming up, but you can count on that, okay? We're working on it, we have meetings coming up, so we can make... So we can make sure we get all that feedback from the staff on what they need, you know, to feel comfortable, but we're working on it.
And I would, and I would expect that the staff, if they're not going to come back, tell us sooner than later, so we have four weeks to fill your spot.
Well, that's a good point. When Gina made the comment about student attendance, I think staff attendance is equally is necessary.
If they're, if they're, what I don't want to see is we get here day one and we have some sick out. That's, that's, that's the worst case scenario.
Right, that fifty-six percent that said they're totally uncomfortable, if their intent is to not be part of an in-person model, needs to come forward.
We need to move forward and find somebody to do that job. And we will do that. At what, what cost is, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, and so we're present, I don't know if you need, if we need to schedule another committee meeting with legal or, or start to look at options to be prepared.
I think, I think you got to just let this run its course. If I think I need Wes to schedule a meeting or to meet with the attorneys, we're not there yet. We have a process we're working through with our attorney to send letters to people that have had some flexibility in their schedule right now that they have to either take the formal leave process for second quarter. We'll work on all that communication. We'll put a timeline on there where they have to give us a, a notification. We have some things posted already, but we hear you loud and clear. And we heard you loud and clear back in, when, when you passed this at seven oh back on August eleventh, right? Some things changed, there were some developments. We're working, we understand the best place for kids to be is on campus.
So we know the administration has heard us and we know, and thank you very much. The administration has been here all summer bodily in the building. Thank you. The administration has worked towards this goal. And in support of our administration, we want our, we want the staff to hear that this is what the board is saying to the administration. It's not the administration pulling this out of the air. I believe, at least my bias or, you know, I don't know if we need to take a vote or something, but I think as a board, we're, we are directing our administration to do something and that we want the staff to hear that loud and clear.
But just two quick points of clarification. They're minor, but I think in this context, they're very important. The T, the faculty did not say, fifty-six percent did not say they were totally uncomfortable. They said, they're uncomfortable. I'm just now, and we've also, when we have said before that we represent the community, the community is the students, the parents and the teachers. So I think it's incredibly important that as we go through this, and there's going to be some hard decisions, some tough discussions maybe, but I just think we have to remind all of ourselves, including all of us on the board, that we have to start with good faith, which we assume, I mean, that's a, it's a given. But all I'm saying is that you can feel it in the room. You can feel it through the statements of the parents and the students. There is anxiety, everybody's under stress, we are as well. And so all I'm saying, it's a, it's a plea for let the cool heads prevail, let's listen to all the concerns, but I sense a slight raising of the emotional level, which is not helpful. And so I'm just being a stickler, but they did not say they are totally uncomfortable. They said, we are not comfortable.
I have a feeling they're going to come back. And they're going to, because they love the children and they love what they do, it's a passion. And I think I'm, I'm very confident in that. If we stick to our timeline, then, and we, and we work methodically through that timeline and then it, you know, we do what we say we're going to do. Well, any more discussion on this one, we'll move on, we'll let the crowd go.
Wes, if I could just add, I, I was going to save this as part of my principal report, but now that we're on topic, you know, just share. So the question that has been repeated, you know, so often tonight is, what can we do to come together? What can we do to raise the comfort level? And these have come from my informal conversations with the staff. So guys, we're all in, in this together, students, the community, parents, everybody here. Guys, please be mindful when we are in the community of wearing your masks, practicing social distancing. Guys, be careful when we're crowded, you know? Those are the things that just make people a little nervous, you know? So if we could just, you know, be mindful of all those guidelines, you know, that the county and the state recommended, that should help, you know, people feel more comfortable. Right, I'm trying to attack that, how do we raise that comfort level, you know? Having conversations, as I just said a minute ago, we're going to talk with the union executive, we're going to talk with the instructional coaches, and then we have the faculty meeting coming up. So guys, give us a chance to continue engaging, you know, our staff members. Guys, working on procedures, I know we, we have a plan and I know you guys have questions, but the teachers also have lots of questions that we have to answer and we're committed to answering as an administration, you know? We're working on some tech needs as well because having students in the classroom while you're teaching a class virtually, guys, I've done it in my talking with the principal, it is very difficult. I've had twenty, thirty parents live, I've had a hundred people online. Guys, it is tricky, it is doable with planning and effort, you know? But guys, right, it just takes time to build that stamina and that comfort level. So just working with that, you know, how could we do that? So guys, those are just some of the minor things that have engaged my staff and what can we do to come together and raise the comfort level. But notice, the teachers believe in-person learning is the best. You know, many want to come back. I know that the, the data may contradict what I'm saying, you know? But we just got to give us a chance to iron out those conversations, iron out those procedures, okay? And I believe we can be and we will be back in person.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Okay. Let's move on to...
Student, well, mission statement, we don't have anything for tonight, that's been tabled.
Additional discussion items and...
Do you want to give a room a minute to clear?
Yeah, let's give a little break for everybody.
Thank you all for coming.
I just want to stick around for the fun stuff. I do want to, additional discussion items, I didn't, I didn't want to miss that part, so...
Yeah, so I'd like to have added, we're projected into deficit spending, we know that. I think we need to have the conversation, what can we think about cutting? We're going to have some difficult conversations. Economy could be rough. There's not going to be more money. And if we do hit that deficit spending this year, it's only going to be exponential next year. You know, our focus is education, not smart things. So we need to start having that hard conversation. What do we, what can go?
Okay, is that... Certainly. Let's do student association report.
Sorry, guys, come on up.
Thanks for adding all your fans left.
This is the first official meeting you get to report out at, right? Or did you do the last one in May? I don't remember.
Uh, no, we have not spoken for a while.
This is the first one, all right, here we go.
Is my voice loud enough? I think I have a pretty loud voice.
Loud enough, but you make sure you introduce everybody, okay?
All right, so we are the Student Association Executive Board. My name's Catherine Glave, I am the president this year. And myself, as well as three other members, will give you a little talk about what we are up to right now and what their positions are. Unfortunately, our vice president Omar Badia and our secretary Lily Favela could not make it tonight, but they do send their best wishes. So let me get started. So first of all, we had our freshman orientation and that went wild, that went really great. We spent the time this summer creating a video to keep the freshmen in one place, keep them from moving throughout the building and limit contact. And that went very smoothly. We worked with Mr. Prokes on creating this video that we wrote and directed and was able to show all the freshmen. The only complaint that we had was that there were students that did not show up for their correct timing. A lot of kids came in the morning, probably just from excitement, but otherwise that went very well. We also wanted to add that we really enjoyed being able to come in on the first day of school. It was a great way to meet our teachers and experience the in-class setting that we have lacked for many months now. It really boosted everyone's morals and I am hoping that once we are able to get back in person, that, that will continue to happen and that we will be able to stick with this in-person model and continue to move forward. Finally, something that just got announced today is that we will be starting to do morning announcement videos. As you, as many of you may know or may not know, Student Association is in charge of the morning announcements every day and with being virtual, we have not been able to do that. So we have been brainstorming ways to incorporate that into our weekly schedule or even daily schedule. And we have come up with a plan to pre-record videos and send them out once a week. So that is something that the exec board will be working on and creating every week for then students to see. And so that will help them just know what's going on in the school atmosphere because speaking from personal experience, as well as what other students have said, many of us don't check our emails and there's not a lot of way to reach the students in a way. So we're hoping that this video, which will be pushed out through Remind, Tweet and Facebook, and hopefully maybe teachers will show it in class if they have time. I know it's very limited, but that is something that we will be working on and will hopefully come into effect in the next month. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Addison Lester and I am the treasurer for exec board this year. So I will be speaking about the freshman class officer elections. This year, the class, freshman class officer elections are going to be all virtual. The election is taking place next week for all of the contested positions. We have publicized the election through email and through the Student Association Instagram, but we are still trying to find more ways to let the students know what's going on. We have nine students running for positions and only two are contested positions, which are the president and the vice president.
Okay, my name is Ken Gonzalez. Hello, everyone.
Hello, Gabe.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, thanks for having me. So I want to talk about Spirit Day, last Friday. We did it, it was a good time. A lot of people wore blue and white.
Virtually?
Of course, yeah, of course. But, um, yeah, we're looking for, oh, I did want to thank the teachers and Dr. Freitas for all the announcements that they pushed out to the kids to wear the blue and white. And we're hoping to do the same thing for Spirit Week, which will be October fifth through the ninth. And we're still working on like what we want people to do, but we think it's going to have just as much success, so, thank you.
Good job, Gabe.
Uh, hello, I'm Amanda DeForty, I'm student spokesperson for SA. Ms. Yola, Ms. Kahler reached out to me and asked me to prepare to answer a question for you guys. And the question is, what has been a positive and a negative experience from e-learning so far? So to prepare for this question, I asked some of my peers what they thought has been a positive and negative experience from e-learning. A consistent positive, that I was told, was how understanding the teachers have been this year. They truly are working the hardest throughout this and understand how difficult this can be for students. From things like tech issues or just missing an assignment, teachers have been a lot more flexible this year. A consistent negative, I was told and agree with, is the screen time and workload. And I know other people have gone over this, but I feel like they have missed some key points. Many teachers are moving at a pace as if we are still in school. While it doesn't seem much different, learning over a screen versus in class is very different and a lot more difficult. This pace has caused a rippling effect for many students to be behind all week long just to spend the weekend catching up, to then repeat the cycle all over again the next week. Many of my peers have mentioned to me the issues stemming from being on a computer screen during the school day, all day. And then they have to do homework for one to four more hours at night. Not only are headaches and migraines now a regular experience from e-learning, higher stress levels and a greater frustration from joining multiple office hours and sending many emails just to get an understanding are just as common. Everyone involved is doing the best they can, given the current situation. However, it is felt that the current schedule being a hundred percent virtually and workload from our teachers is doing more harm than good. That's all I have for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you, nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Forti.
Good job, Student Association, sorry you had to wait.
Yes, thank you, sorry you had to wait so long.
Promise, October, we'll have you at the front.
We got a lot to do in October.
Email the governor.
Email the governor.
President's report, I don't have a report. Student advisory report.
Now, this is your guys' inaugural report to the board, so...
She had them stayed for some...
I'll start. Um, so, good evening, members of the School Board of Education. We have a few comments about remote learning and also the seal of bi-literacy. So I'm going to start off with the screen time. It's been mentioned multiple times, there is fatigue, the, the survey showed that as well. It's gotten better with the more time on Mondays, just those passing periods are really helpful. I also think that many students are exhausted and can't focus, specifically in the afternoon. Because in the morning, I feel like we're more ready to start the day, but then after lunch and then it just gets harder to focus. I also noted that, based on what we've seen, students want to come back, what we've heard, many students want to do a hybrid model, any type of way we can go back. And that incentivizing to do surveys, I think Dr. Freitas did a really good job with that. The students that haven't, I really hope that more students fill out this survey because Dr. Freitas really is pushing this out and I just really think students should spend more time on this, more students should be filling it out. And then mentioning the seal of bi-literacy, Dr. Freitas is going to speak more about this, but he is my support because I really think this is really important for the school, for college. It's really helpful to have a language that's not taught at RB or taught at RB to get recognition outside of an AP credit, instead, like most languages.
Okay, I am going to be discussing how student involvement is continuing throughout quarter one. So as we all know, we have six sports running. And being personally involved in a sport, I know that all the student athletes are being incredibly mature in approaching their sports at meets or matches. Every student's wearing their mask when necessary, not when they're playing, but on bus rides or in between games. And the sports are really a good way for students to get away from the workload of, on the computer. And I think we're doing a good job celebrating our seniors in the middle of the pandemic. I know the boys' golf senior night was last Friday. Girls' golf will be this Thursday, girls' tennis is this Friday. Girls' cross country is October third. And I'm not sure about the two other sports. Boys' cross country might be the same day, I'm not positive. But all the sports teams are practicing social distancing procedures, being screened daily by our athletic trainers, Mr. Frye and H, and then they are wearing their masks. And so clubs have taken virtual formats. I know that almost all the clubs, if not all of them, are running in Zoom formats. A bunch that I'm involved in have meetings. Last week I had three club meetings in the mornings. And clubs are also running during lunch periods or after school. And clubs like AST and NHS are coming up with creative ways to help out in the community virtually, which is really great to give back to the Riverside Brookfield areas. And NHS will be having their virtual ceremony to induct the senior class that we were supposed to have last spring, but it got postponed for many, many months. And NHS is also hosting a fundraiser this week in which they are collecting PPE kits and food kits to donate to families in Riverside Brookfield area. And if there's overfill, they will donate to other charities. And again, I'd like to agree with all of Michael's points. I think that screen time is a big issue and workload. I don't think teachers understand that doing work on the computer can be more time-consuming and difficult, especially with technical difficulties. But they are being incredibly supportive, which helps students get through these hard times. And, yeah, I think that the seal of bi-literacy is also a very great opportunity for RB students who might be, have taken language... for RB students who might be have taken language throughout high school and gotten to that high level or are just native speakers.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, you know, you said like about the encouraging everyone to take the surveys.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, I, I, I just wonder if you guys can put your heads together with some of your friends too and maybe provide some suggestions about what would, I mean, obviously, we're never going to get 100%, but like that's the goal, right? We should always have a goal of 100. So, you know, and Dr. Freitas is doing his, more than his part, right, to get it out there. But what is, is, what, what would help? And you don't have to answer that now, and I don't expect you to answer it now. But like putting your head together with some of your friends and maybe thinking about what that might be would be awesome.
As we mentioned at the last meeting, I think it's a good idea to push the survey out during class time. I think that would definitely get, that would be the only way.
And how long, like, how long did it take you to do it when you did it?
Two minutes.
Yeah, it didn't take long.
Right, so we're not talking about taking away a lot of learning time.
No, because it's all multiple choice anyway, and then if there's a comment, they can make that. It's not a lot of work.
Yeah, it's just like a sentence or two, math.
Right, well, and you know what, if you did the majority of the survey, but then waited till after class was over to do the comment and then hit submit, right? Like, you can leave that browser window open, right, in Chrome and then, okay.
Dr. Freitas, I think it, just so Mr. Tenaco can, want to do the seal of bili literacy? If we move that up on the agenda so you can touch on that and do your brief presentation on that?
Yeah.
Then we can get into the rest of the board matters. Tough time to give a separate presentation. Sorry you had to wait, Mr. Tenaco.
That's perfectly fine. So, good evening, board members. Today, you know, we have the privilege and the honor, you know, to be presenting the seal of bili literacy to, for the students. And I just quickly, you know, want to recognize, you know, Juanito, Mr. Tenaco. It's a term of endearment, me calling him Juanito, but, you know, for all the work, you know, we really co-created, you know, the presentation. We practiced, and, you know, I'm excited to be presenting with you today, Juanito, in front of our board. I also want to thank Ms. Kylie Link, with all the language teachers, for previous conversation that they've had, right? You know, about the seal of bili literacy, but now, you know, we're delivering this. So thank you, students, as well, for, you know, recognizing the value and for showing your curiosity, you know, and this, you know, hopefully will enlighten you a little more. I've had the opportunity to, if we could go to the agenda first. So we're going to give a quick overview of the seal of bili literacy, give a little background, share some data, you know, share the vision and purpose, and what it could look like here at RB.
Fifty-eight, mirror, fifty-eight of seventy-four.
So what is the seal of bili literacy? Being bili is being able to speak, write, and listen in both languages and do with proficiency. What is the state seal of bili literacy? Is the recognition you get when you're fluent in both languages. And later on in the presentation, Mr. Tenaco will talk about, once you show proficiency, what are your benefits that you gain from that? So the seal of bili literacy is not new. This was founded nine years ago in the state of California. They were the first ones to adopt this. New York followed, DC followed, and then as you look at the current map, over 40 states have adopted the seal of bili literacy. And currently, the state of Illinois, 126 school districts. So this is a nationwide movement to recognize bilingualism. And for those who know a little bit about the history of this country, what's made this, this country really special is bilingual origins. Back when this country was founded, there was more German spoken than English. Spanish was spoken here. French was spoken here. Dutch was spoken here. So this country has bilingual, and excuse me, and all the native languages, of course. So this country has had bilingual, trilingual origins since the beginning. Here in our great state of Illinois, if we go to the next slide, please. In 2013, the seal of bili was approved by the Illinois General Assembly, and this was actually spearheaded by State Senator Iris Martinez. She was the lead sponsor, so I want to thank Senator Martinez and everyone that has, that supported this bill. In 2014, the state board released a guideline to attain the seal of bili literacy, and it began being adopted voluntarily. So that's a little bit about the history. Currently, projections, if we could go to the next slide, please. Currently, and this is for last year, the 2019-2020 school year, there should be about 11,000 awards, 11,000 students receiving the designation in 126 school districts in 37 languages. So I think that is pretty special, and I want to thank everyone at the Illinois State Board of Education for having moved this forward. And then the commendation, which is a secondary award, if we could go to the next slide, please. There's, they were predicted to have 6,358 awardees, adopted by 98 school districts in 24 languages. The seal of bili literacy gets you college credit. The commendation gets you designation. And Juanito will speak a little bit about what benefits that can have. Mr. Tenaco, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Freitas. And I think just pretty much, I'm just going to touch a little bit quickly on when it comes to the seal of bili literacy. As Dr. Freitas explained it, I mean, it's pretty much showing that a student is proficient in English and in another language. For some students, it's their first language, as is the case, as you could see from the state data, or look, I mean, from the state data, most of the students, of course, it's Spanish. But how do we get there? How do we get the students to get to get the seal of bili literacy? The seal is like, all right, full college credit recognition advancement. Commendation, it's more of like, okay, we see that you are proficient. You know, we're, we're going to grant you perhaps maybe advanced status instead of doing, for example, two years, which is what a lot of colleges and universities require students once they start their undergraduate degree. Instead of doing two years, maybe they just do one year, for example, and they have much more opportunities to be able to pursue at the undergraduate level. But to kind of provide you real quickly with some local data right here in terms of here for RB. So for the 2020 and 2021 academic school year, these are the students that are eligible for the seal of bili literacy. So we currently have two senior students that are in AP German Language. So in order for you to be able to reach that milestone, as it states, which I will get to in just in a couple of slides later, in order for students to reach this milestone, they should have at least done something to the equivalent of four to six years of a language. We have schools that start taking a language since the middle school level. We also have students who start taking a language classes, which is why we highly encourage students to start taking a language class since freshman year. Or we have, in the case of some of our Spanish-speaking population students, or we have them coming in already knowing the language. So we have six senior students who are in either Honors French IV as seniors or they are taking AP French Language. And we currently have 129 senior students either in Honors Spanish IV or in AP Spanish Language. I put an asterisk right there because we already have 15 students, those are juniors, well, those are seniors who are known as heritage speakers. Those are students who grew up speaking the language at home, and they are in a more accelerated track. So they actually have the opportunity to come out with dual, we should say, AP college-level courses. They do a course in language and a course in literature. And then I put right there that some of these numbers are subject to change, of course, because we sometimes may have a student who may not have taken a language class at RB because they were perhaps in intervention courses such as extended reading, which did not permit it, for example, for them to take it their freshman year or perhaps even their sophomore year, which I'll touch upon that in later. So just real quickly, the seal, the vision and purpose of the seal of bili literacy is to provide that opportunity for all students to be able to participate in this since freshman year. They will have access and the opportunity to participate in this. It's a program that is committed, of course, to high standards, rigorous curriculum, and effective instruction. So it's going to go beyond the basics to ensure that all students, you know, are critical thinkers, effective communicators, and of course, responsible global citizens. Let me see, look at, so now, at a glance. So obviously, a little bit of more data. The languages programs that we offer here at RB are, of course, Spanish. We also have Spanish for heritage speakers, French and German. Approximately, we have 968 students enrolled taking a language, which is approximately 60% of the RB population is taking a language. But aside from that, we also have some RB students who know another language, you know, that they speak from home. So as you can see right here, we have Arabic, Croatian, Serbian, Russian, Polish. So there are going to be even opportunities for some, some of those students to even come out as trilingual as well. So like if they know how to read, write, listen, and speak in their, first, in their home language, they'll be able to come out with even recognition, you know, in knowing how to speak Polish, Russian, or even Czech, as you could see right here. So now, how do you get there? So I think that's, I think the key piece right here is how do you get there? So you have to show proficiency first, not only in the second language, but you also have to show proficiency in English as well. And as you could see right here, there are various venues. So the first one is you have to meet the benchmark of 480 on the SAT E-R-W, which is what the College Board recommends. So you have to have a 480. You can also, the other venue is, we have a lot of students that have taken the AP English Language Exam. So if they got a five, that can also count as them demonstrating that proficiency in English. We also have for our population of students who are identified as ELA or bilingual education students, they have to pass the access test with a 4.8 or better composite score. Now, to demonstrate proficiency in the other language, so we have students, once they get to the AP Language and Culture Exam, so they have to score a four or a five. The other venue, of course, is passing the Apple exam, which with a composite score of I-5. What does that I-5? It means showing a proficiency of intermediate high, which I will get to in just a moment. And how do you get there? Of course, it requires students pretty much starting either from freshman year or the middle school in seventh or eighth grade, taking a language class. And that requires them, of course, continuing and taking a language class throughout their four years here at RB. And if the language exam is not available, in other words, if there's no AP exam or the Apple exam, other options to demonstrate such proficiency are available. It would just be a matter of them just communicating with me. And so now, now I'm going to get to this proficiency model so right here. So I'm just going to explain this quickly. So this is according to the ACTF standards, the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages. So in order to get that recognition, in order to reach that intermediate proficiency, as it says right there, a student has to be able, as it says right there, create with language and bring to a close, simple conversation by asking and responding to simple questions. So language instruction has really changed with time. It's not like how it was back in the day where you just had to memorize those phrases and repeat them, verb conjugations. No, you step into the classroom of any world language instruction, you have students already doing like mini presentations, and we do a lot of stuff that also supports other core language classes. I mean, they're looking at graphs. They're interpreting them in Spanish. So I mean, we're actually using the language that they are learning in the classroom. So it's like they're using it for, you know, a purpose. They're reading articles and they're having discussions. Like, for example, in my class, I'm, I'm the one who teaches AP courses, and I taught also in the past the Level Ones and the Level Twos. I mean, I have students already doing analyzing, interpreting texts and things like that. So that just gives you an idea of what proficiency level they have to be. And that pretty much starts since the freshman level. And we have many of their students, I'm just going to single out Lily. I have her in my class in my AP. She perhaps started since the middle school, since seventh and eighth grade. But in order to reach that, as it says right there, they need to have taken four to six years of a language. And just to kind of put like a what-if situation, last year, using the statistics, we had 64 students take the AP Language Exam. Out of the 64%, out of 64, sorry, 64 students, 62 students passed with a three or better. Only two students passed with a, did not pass. So the average score was a four. So in other words, 96.8% of those students, if we had the seal of bili literacy program, they would have walked out of RB with a recognition. 26.5% would receive that commendation, whereas 70.3% of those would walk out with the full seal, meaning they would already walk out with college recognition, and that recognition is also attached to their transcript as well. So that is also like where their recognition is at, but also as well, it's attached to their diploma. But that right there, and as you could see, our goal is to get the students to pass the AP exam or pass the Apple exam. And I also add a little highlight right there. There are studies also that show that it helps out with the SAT and ACT scores as well. And so the benefits now, exploring college credit and benefits, so right there. By law, Illinois public universities will accept the state seal of bili literacy. So as equivalent to have taken two years of a foreign language coursework, many universities also waive any foreign language requirements or grant college credit. And in terms of employment, students can also use it and be like, hey, I'm proficient. I'm able to rewrite, listen, and speak in the language as well. I'm able to actually have like a conversation with somebody. I'm able to, you know, write up an essay, for example, things like that. So it's actually something that they could use even for future employment as well. Now, I also added this also little chart right here. So just so you could see in terms of just cost savings and things like that, and using pretty much some of the most common colleges and community colleges that students attend to. And as you could see, if they get a three, for example, UIC, it awards them four semester hours, which is the equivalent of almost saving 3,500 bucks. If they get a four or a five, that's four to eight semester hours, so we're talking here close to six grand. All right. So that really gives you an idea of just how it pretty much is. Triton, I know that we have many students that go to Triton. We have students that also could save up money as well. And, let me see, what else? And so what's next? In order to adopt this, of course, it's going to be placed in the Curriculum Guide for the 2020-2021 school year. The ISBE requires us to put it in our Curriculum Guide. It also to let parents inform them about the seal of bili literacy as well and put it in our RBHS World Language website. And then also offer a virtual information session, pardon me, that will be given to parents during the first two weeks of October as well. So especially for those incoming freshman parents, you know, inform them about the benefits of pretty much taking a language and, you know, really seeing the benefits in committing to a four-year, to pretty much four years of a language. And then also sign up students to take the Apple exam and the AP Language and Culture Exams as well. I think the students who will reach the AP milestone have much more higher chances, of course, because they also take the AP exam as well. And senior students who are not enrolled in a language course, who speak another language that's not offered here at RB, are highly encouraged to come and speak to me about, you know, possibly being able to demonstrate proficiency and perhaps walking out of here trilingual or, you know, polyglots, maybe even knowing, perhaps knowing other languages as well.
Dr. Freitas, you have this listed as a first read.
Correct.
So after, after the board asks their questions and stuff, I think, is there, the goal is to put this in the Curriculum Guide for October?
Correct.
And there's no additional budget implications on this, is there, Dr. Freitas?
Not at the, no.
This is strictly a procedural, they have the board approve it, and then you and Mr. Tenaco going through all the steps?
Correct.
Can I also say something?
Go ahead, Michael, of course.
So both my parents are immigrants and I learned English and Polish at home. I've been going to a local Polish high school here for 11 years, and it's actually ISBE affiliated. I was going to take the, one of these exams for the proficiency, but having the seal of bili literacy is just going to make it that much more like meaningful. I also know six other students that go to RB that go to that school, so it would also help us out as well. I just really think this should be implemented. Like I mentioned before, 126 other districts have implemented it. I don't see why we shouldn't, but it's really important to me.
Thank you, Michael. Does the board have any questions for Dr. Freitas or Mr. Tenaco?
I do. What does, so it's, six years is better, obviously, the younger they start, the better it is. So my, my children went to growth, so I know what's offered there. What does it look like? What does it look like at Hauser and Kamarak for?
So Hauser offers, they have a French and a Spanish program, so they have the seventh and eighth grade. So it's a robust, it looks very similar like ours, they have Monday through Friday. So they walk in and they go through a placement exam, if they pass it, of course, they enter a Level Two, so that means they start with the Accelerate Program. Kamarak unfortunately does not offer a language program as robust as Hauser and Gross, but I think that, that has what really has helped us out in terms of students continuing and taking a language at the AP level. So they have that advantage right there, in terms of starting at a much, at the middle school levels.
Yeah. Is there any way to, I mean, I think it'd be great to communicate with them, this path that we're on, right? And is there, I mean, I don't know how we could support them, right, except for maybe helping them craft a plan?
Right.
If they could come around to the idea of having a, a, a language class there?
Right. I, I, there are other, I know there are various other school districts, and I mean, this is a whole different topic of conversation, they're going to like dual immersion, for example.
I teach in a, in a dual.
Right.
In Berwin, right, we do dual.
Right. In Berwin, yes, I've heard, like, Berwin Oswego, I mean, so many schools are, you know, headed that route. They're using, you know, knowing another language is additive. It's like, it's beneficial, actually helps with the improvement of just learning another language. In this case, there's this push, you know, you know, they need to learn English, right? But let's also keep on, you know, helping them, you know, and learning another language. So I think in terms of going back to your original question, I think it's really communicating with the feeder schools, and I mean, and continuing to support the languages, I guess that's one thing. And really, I guess, I guess really promoting just like the importance of languages, that it's not just you're learning another language, but you're also, it's helping you out in your other skills as well. Like, if you want to be successful and, you know, get really good scores in your other core academic classes as well, and, and it just really helps you out in terms of, you know, not, I mean, it's a skill that you could use pretty much.
Sure, I would absolutely echo that. I didn't know English as well until I took Spanish in high school. Right? Like, looking at them side by side and comparing them.
Exactly.
A lot of light bulbs went on for me about English.
Right.
While I was learning Spanish, right? So of course.
Exactly.
And I think the whole being receptive of other cultures, right?
Correct.
And learning what they are about, right? Because, again, you know, ignorance breeds fear, fear breeds hate.
Correct.
So we want to make things as inclusive as possible, right?
Correct.
So I mean, yes, Michael, there is absolutely no, the reason it's coming here is because it's got to go in the curriculum guide, and anything that goes in the curriculum guide has to come through us, but I would imagine that everyone on this board absolutely sees no issue with this, I would hope.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be willing to waive the second reading if it's, if we're concerned about printing deadlines with the curriculum guide.
That's what I was trying to lead up to, unless the board has concerns, this may be one that's, and all, if we could just take a roll call, not, it doesn't have to be a roll call vote, but it could give Dr. Freitas and Mr. Tenoco an opportunity to get moving on some of the other things they need to do.
Well, I think we passed last time that a second reading was just necessary for issues that had financial implications.
That's actually on today's agenda.
That's on the agenda for today. But yes, correct, there's no budgetary impact.
So we could go forward.
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
There are several private schools, it's a great program, that, I know Timothy and I think St. John's and LaGrange, where the students are able to take Spanish, high school Spanish, by eighth grade and get one high school credit. So hopefully this opens up an articulation with our feeder schools, where maybe they even walk over here and are, you know, integrated into our language program.
Right. And I think, and I think it's, it really, I think this is really going to help, I guess, connect even more when it comes to the articulation with the feeder schools especially. And I think it's, when it comes to, I guess, not only connecting us more with our feeder schools, but I think also, I guess, sending out the message, you know, as well, that, you know, this, it's an additive, I guess. It's really like, a lot, I know at the elementary level as well, you know, they talk about improving test scores and really equipping, I guess, the students with the skills to be successful. And I think having a language, you know, as it was stated right now, it, you really don't understand like how a language works until you start taking a foreign language, I guess. But yeah.
So I have one other question, I think not related to the, to this program, but I think I'd like to hear at a future board meeting, if it's more Kylie or someone else on the curriculum side, to talk about what our language plans are.
Yes, I saw that question.
Okay, so that was one of my questions, you know, with where we are with the German program, and then other options besides Spanish and French. I'd like to understand how we can move forward with a variety of languages that ultimately would be eligible for this program.
Yeah, Dan, I can share quickly. So as far as our language plan, you know, I would say it's in development. Unfortunately, you know, German, and I don't know why, because I'm a lover of languages, you know, students aren't, haven't been as interested in the language. And currently, and now, currently, we're offering German via the Illinois Virtual School, IVS. You know, we had a hard time finding, you know, a qualified individual, which is very tough, so we went the online option. You know, our section in our classes are dictated by student interest, of course. So if there's more interest, you know, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't open up a section or continue recruiting. I believe, right, the Spanish numbers have been holding steady, and as well as French, you know, but, you know, fortunately, you know, at least from my understanding at the moment, you know, students haven't demonstrated that much interest in the language. I'm not going to give up on it. As I just said, I'm a, I'm a lover of languages, but again, you know, it's all dictated by interest and student involvement. But it's, we're developing the plan right now, you know, we're using IVS for German, and we'll have to wait and see what the next step is.
Let's put that on a list to follow back up on in October then, okay?
All right. Do we have to give a vote on this?
I'm going to read a motion, okay? Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves adding the Seal of Bilingual program to the 2021-2022 Curriculum Guide. I need a second.
Second.
This can be an all in favor?
Yeah, it doesn't have any budget implication, so you can do, yeah, your name.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right?
Ayes have it.
Okay, go to it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
Thank you, Juanito.
Thank you for staying.
Superintendent report?
Superintendent's report?
Short Superintendent's report. Curriculum Advisory Council, no update, Facility Advisory Council, we're just, we have one or two final punch list items. Ms. Matan and Mr. Hatchey from our facility, our Facilities Manager, will present this fall to the board any outstanding work that needs to be completed for life safety and update on our progress. I would imagine that will probably be late October, November. No update from Finance Advisor, will start working on in October, the levy, personal advisory, no update policy advisory, only have the one policy on the agenda tonight. Purchase lease of land, my next meeting with the representatives from the Forest Reserve and the Zoo, and the, is October seventh, and our liability insurance advisory council is meeting this week. That's it for the Superintendent's report.
Principal's report?
All right, good evening, board members. Here's my principal report on how we're moving onward, onward, ever onward here at RB. Guys, can you believe we're in week five of remote learning? And every day I get impressed by what the students can do and what the teachers teach, you know? I do a virtual walkthrough, I want to say, at least once or, or twice every few days. And guys, our teachers are preparing your sons, your daughters for college, and this is how. They're teaching them how to use a virtual platform right, how to work in breakout rooms, how to screen share, how to write digitally on a document so others can see. So you guys actually have a head start, because the college model is a blended model. There's in-person learning and there's online. You're going to have to respond to prompts, you're going to have to work together. So I'm really so proud, you know, of the skill set that our staff is teaching the students, you know? Guys, I'm proud of you guys for experimenting, for getting better at it, and whenever I pop up, you know, I'm like, guys, let me see your screen share. Let me see you write on a PDF, you know, I'm checking, I'm checking, because I want to make sure that you guys are prepared for college. But you guys are doing a nice job, and of course, our staff is doing an outstanding job as well. Guys, here are also some tips for being successful in remote learning. Oh, skip the, excuse me. Guys, rest and get away from the screen. That's why we have the ten-minute passing period. Take a little break, take two, three minutes, don't look at anything, and then come back, you know, a minute or two before you have to log in. Guys, charge your equipment, okay? Student, I see something bubbling, charging, oh, my computer died, because then you got to reboot it, you got to reset it. Guys, you just lost five, ten minutes of instruction. Charge your equipment. Guys, students, log in a minute or two before you Zoom class, stay the whole time, okay? And when the teacher calls on you, I know we're flexible with some people having the cameras off, but respond, because we're checking, we want to make sure you're there. Guys, attend virtual office hours if you need extra help. Create a safe space or a workstation. You know, have your little desk, your bed, you know, but you know, make it look like a school desk, you know? Guys, contact your teachers if you can. Guys, students, guys, please put your phones away. It's, I notice, and teachers notice, when you're looking at the screen and when you're looking down in the way. I don't know what you're looking at when you're looking down in the way, but I know you're not looking at the screen. So whatever you're looking at, guys, remove that distraction, okay? We want you guys focused. And guys, please be mindful also of household distractions. I know sometimes I've heard dogs or music, and, and maybe, you know, that method works for you guys, we're all different learners. Guys, just be mindful, you're in a learning community. So if you're jamming out to rock, what you're doing, you know, AP Statistics, maybe not everyone who likes the music will get distracted. Guys, just be mindful of your own habits as you enter a community space, okay? That's all I ask. Guys, student attendance is outstanding. For week three, we were at ninety-six point three-four. Year-to-date, we are at ninety-six point eight-seven percent for ADA. So our, our attendance is pretty good. And for our teacher attendance, we are at ninety-six point five. Guys, we are in Hispanic Heritage Month. It is celebrated every year from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. It begins with the independence of five Central American countries, the fifteenth, the sixteenth is Mexican Independence Day, and it ends just shortly after Indigenous Peoples' Day in October fifteenth. Guys, we've been, we're celebrating here at the school, we've been doing little Instagram posts as well. We had a little treat for the staff. We had Concha, the Mexican sweetbread, you know, Concha means a shell, so that the bread kind of has the pattern of a shell. So it was really nice having teachers get involved. And we're also working with Mr. Tenoco, who just left, who is the sponsor of the Spanish Club, and Ms. Trevino, who is the sponsor of the Organization for Latin American Students, will be hosting, you know, more virtual events as well, doing some kind of virtual Spirit Week, you know, having treats and stuff, you know, for the staff. Race and Equity. Guys, yesterday, I emailed everybody an opportunity to be a founding member of our Race and Equity Committee. What are we going to be doing together? Guys, we're going to be identifying and recommending opportunities for RB to infuse equitable practices in curriculum and instruction, discipline, human resources, professional development, student growth, extracurricular programming, communications, parent involvement. Guys, everything we do, we're going to look at it through an equitable lens. And from the words of Sharrett Danielson, an amazing educator, this is what she said, "Excellence in education and teaching is only achieved when schools are committed to equity." Ms. Danielson created the framework that we use to evaluate the staff. You know, I'm a big fan of Ms. Danielson. Our first Race and Equity Committee meeting will be October twelfth via Zoom from six thirty to eight PM. I did send an opportunity for you to join. I'm assuming the first meeting is going to be very crowded, but guys, please, you know, I welcome everyone, but this is a serious commitment, because we're going to talk about serious comment, and there's going to be work to do. Okay, so if you do, if you are going to join my committee, prepare to work, you know, I welcome everyone, but please, you know, this is a serious commitment to add value to what we're doing already here at RB. Student acknowledgements, I know earlier we acknowledged James Jamison for being a 2021 National Merit Finalist. I also did want to, you know, celebrate, you know, our National Merit Committed Scholars, Harry Adami, Eva Funaki, Isabel Garcia, Daniel Gonzalez, Kareem Hamas, Olivia Janunas, Ella Johnson, Ryan Locke, Owen Mars, Abigail Morrissey, Tessa Wachowski, Giovanna Pradnitz, James Sarkarsky, Eric Watson, and Emily Shue, sorry if I mispronounced your name, but these are students that were National Merit Committed Scholars. So I want to make sure I acknowledge those students. Athletics, as mentioned earlier, our boys golf team had their senior night last week. Congratulations to all the golfers. What a smart sport, you can play that the rest of your life. And I'm a former wrestler, I've got pains in my hands, my ribs, a fake tooth, you know, can't, can't do that as much as I did a few years ago, but nice job, golfers. Girls Golf Senior Night is this Thursday, September twenty-fourth. Girls Swimming versus Oswego East at home this thirties to the twenty-fourths. We have Girls Tennis Senior Night Friday at home. Girls Cross Country this Friday Senior Night, and then the Boys Cross Country Senior Night coming next week. Guys, please remember, technically, these events, you know, are not open to the, are not open to the public. I mean, if it's an open space, right, if cross country's running at the park, you're welcome at that park. But just remember, guys, I'm advertising so you guys know what's going on. Feel free to follow me, you know, on Instagram, as I tweet, do videos and post pictures. There are also many students and coaches that kind of go online as well. Okay, so I'm sharing, so please, I want to avoid crowding, I just want you guys to know, okay? Activities, the RB Band Field Show will be tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty-third in the evening. Again, this is for your information, I'm sure they will have it virtually or streamed somehow, so RB Band will be doing a field show, there's appropriate socially distance, wearing the mask, following all those guidelines. To all the students and community and families, of course, the IT Department is sending you guys an important message today at one forty-five. Guys, the district purchased and installed Zoom educational platform, which will provide added security features for our virtual classroom environments. Tomorrow, students, you should expect to receive an email notification sent by Zoom to authenticate your account. Students, please complete the authentication process, because if you don't, you may have a hard time logging into Zoom. Guys, we are battling Zoom bombs, okay? It's not easy, and we're not the only ones going through it. That's why we partnered with Zoom to purchase the educational feature, which only allows students with an RBHS website to enter. But guys, I need you to do your part, students. Please check your email and complete the form that Zoom sends out. Parents, please help us, because we want to make sure that we keep a safe and sane environment when we're doing virtual learning. SATs coming up, October fourteenth and fifteenth, there will be no virtual classes for the freshmen, sophomores and juniors. October seventh, there will be a student workshop led by Ms. Wilma and Ms. Linquist. All this information can be found on our website. For practice, I know, I believe there was a parent concern for practice. Students, you guys could always go to conacademy.org. Con Academy also has an application that you could download on your smartphone and practice. Send a text message, do a problem. Call a friend, do a problem, okay? Alternate, leisure and academics, okay? So I highly recommend that you download, great app that works well, Con Academy. Tuesday, September twenty-ninth at six thirty PM, we are having a Fast Food Workshop, the Free Application for Student Aid, led by the Illinois, the Director of Illinois Student Commission, Abel Montoya, who's a very good friend of mine. So the Director of ISAC will be leading this Fast Food Workshop, okay? Again, it'll be virtually, the information is found on our website. Also tomorrow, students, an opportunity to hang out with me, okay, virtual lunch with Dr. Freitas. I know last year I did virtual, excuse me, I did in-person lunches, pizza with the principal, but I'm doing a virtual lunch tomorrow, starting at eleven twenty, okay? So guys, you know, join me, okay? Let's eat together, and let's talk about how remote learning is going for you all, okay? I believe I send you guys a reminder today as well. Guys, this is a census year, census twenty-twenty. Please complete the census form, we want to make sure we take advantage of all of our resources. And here's some data up to date. Brookfield, you're at eighty point two percent. Riverside, eighty point three percent. North Riverside, seventy-seven point seven percent. Broadview, seventy-three point one percent. And LaGrange, eighty-one point one percent. So the race is close, but the goal is one hundred percent for everybody, so please complete the census form. And I believe at the end of the month, the workers will stop going to houses, so it's kind of a soft deadline, so please try to complete the census by the end of September. And that concludes my principal And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Can I ask, is there a makeup date for the SAT?
A makeup date?
Because it's in-person, correct?
Correct.
So if a student doesn't feel good, we don't want them coming to school.
Correct. I want to say I thought it was at the end of October.
It is, if I could just...
I just think we should let that be known, like, share that with parents, because that's the day that if it's in-person and your student wakes up not feeling well, you may feel like you need to send them anyway, and that would not be a good idea.
We'll get that out.
Okay.
Kristen? Assistant Sue?
Yep, good evening. I'd like to provide some financial information for the month of August. This represents 16.7% of the fiscal year. My report begins on Board Book Page 18. If you want to go to the next page, Mary Ann, thank you. The total operating revenue for the month was $5,800,953, with 88% coming from real estate taxes and CPPRT, 5% coming from student fees and combination of summer camps, and then 3% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. The total operating expenditures for the month were $1,725,347, with 60, sorry, 86% towards salary and benefits, and 7% towards operation and maintenance supplies and services, and 3% towards building level supplies. On Board Book Page 20, this is a summary of revenue, which shows the district has received 35% of our budgeted revenue for this year. This is, this amount is down from 3% last fiscal year. It's also to note, the comparison on the revenue side isn't equal either, because we've also decreased our budgeted expenditure, our budgeted revenues for this year as well. So it's, you know, that 3% is significant. The next page, Board Book Page 21. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 19% of the budgeted expenditures for the year. This is also down compared to this, this time last fiscal year, which was at 23%. You know, and part of the reason for this is due to the delay in paying stipends. Typically, we would start stipends in August, and we did not do that this year as we were working on the MOU. So that certainly is a cost, as well as a decreased cost in athletics. Normally, we would have football games, and we would have table workers for various events, and, and things of that nature. And so that's a decrease, as well as, you know, transportation cost and official costs. So all of that didn't occur in August, as well as a delay in receiving a lot of our special education tuition invoices. You know, it usually takes, I think it's taken a while this year to get up and running and receiving those. So I think that's why there's a discrepancy. I think it'll be closer when we look at how things shook out in September. And then, as always, I've included the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month, as well as the student activity account summary for the month of August. As you look at that in your leisure, just remember that negative account balances on that report represent positive fund balances, so it's the opposite. There was, initially, there were two additional reports. I had to pull the 2019-20 Certified Staff Compensation Report as the salaries had included the teachers' 9% contributions to TRS. So I'm in the process of correcting that, because that should not be included. And then I'll post that by the October 1st deadline and share that out with the board again. There was a question submitted. This, this report only includes the teacher's base salary. There is no place for stipends on this report. So that's their base salary, as well as the other benefits, our insurance benefits.
So, so to clarify, this is the format the state requires?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Because I think there's the, the stipend and additional funding would be a, a nice side-by-side column, as would accrued time off. I mean, as we talk about returning to work and people needing to leverage their sick time. I know you've got the earned time off column, but not the aggregate.
Yes, so in, in the past, we've always posted on our website the EIS report. If the board is interested in, in including additional information moving forward, those are, those are pieces of information that I could certainly include. We do not, we do not report that on the EIS report to the state.
Yeah, I'm not sure it needs to be a public document. I think I'd just like to see it otherwise.
So what I do have for you tonight is, on Board Book Page 36, the Transfer and Enrollment Report. This is an annual report that we provide to the board. It really compares, you know, where we projected enrollment to be in November and where we are right now. I think it's important to note that this is a snapshot. We always take it around, you know, the middle of September, but our enrollment is constantly changing. Sometimes it's very different at the end of the year than it is necessarily in the fall. But as you can see in the far-right column, the overall projected enrollment for the year back in November was 1,683 students. And the actual enrollment is 1,659 students, for a difference of 24 students. And when you look at students that are just physically in the building, the projection was again off about 24, 25 students. There were several questions submitted regarding this report. So first, the question was, had we doubled our outplaced students in five years? And that is correct. So as you can see on the, on the chart, in 2016, 17, we had 15 outplaced students, and now we are currently at 30. Another question was submitted regarding whether or not we lost students to private education because they were going in-person this year. You know, I don't have data to necessarily support that or necessarily refute that. I can certainly try to collect some anecdotal data. Certainly, our, if you look at our transfer-out data, which is in the second ribbon, kind of, you'll see that we had 35 students exit, and that is somewhat consistent in the past two years. So I think if anything, we may have seen that happen. We may have seen that happen more so at the freshman level. But I would have to collect some anecdotal data to get a firm answer on that. Then there was another question submitted about the average cost of the traditional student, the outplaced student, and the transition student. The average cost for the traditional student, as we report to ISV, is $15,156.19. The average cost for an outplaced student that just goes to a therapeutic day school is, and this includes transportation, is roughly $63,828. If a student is a residential placement, that is, is more costly, and the average for that is about $155,000 a year. We do receive reimbursements in some capacity for these students that are always the next previous fiscal year. The average transition student, I'm not, I would need more time to estimate that, because they are in our building, they do access our faculty. So I would assume it would be closer to the 15. We don't provide transportation for those students. But those students are also doing a lot of work at job sites and things of that nature, so that cost might be lower. I would need some more time to, to have a real good estimate in regards to that. And those are the only questions submitted.
Thank you, Kristen. Mr. Smithing, Old Business?
All right. Move to Old Business unless there's any more questions, Old Business?
Board President, just clarification on the agenda. Normally, on Old Business, we have approval of minutes, right?
No, this is the special committee of the whole.
Yeah, we do that.
It's at the business meeting.
Okay, so we don't have those, because I thought we were gonna have a consent agenda for the...
We only have one item to vote on right now, because the other one's monetary.
Okay, okay, all right.
Life Safety Capital Improvements?
No update at this time.
Board Policy, Education Meeting Procedure.
This was the one that I think was gonna be put on the consent agenda, but Mary Ann felt that there was only this really, was the only item for the consent. And we made the one change by taking off the legal implication. So the highlighted blue area in the second paragraph, where it says, "When possible, agenda items that have a budgetary impact should be addressed, presented to the board at two meetings to ensure the board has appropriate time to review and discuss such agenda items." No other questions were submitted on this, so I think we would be okay for action.
To read the... Little questions, let's read the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, "The Board of Education, Town and High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the update for policy 2:20, Board of Education meeting procedure as presented in the September 22nd, 2020 Board Agenda Packet."
So, all in favor?
Second...
Second by Ms. Sales.
Director Lynn Sales, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Electrical Contract Extension?
Kristen, this is the second item, but we wanted to go into a little bit with the dollar amount, or have anything, any, I don't think any questions were submitted. There were some alternative questions that were submitted?
There were no questions submitted in regards to the electricity contract.
Right, but...
There were other general questions submitted in regards to looking at other green initiatives moving forward, such as, you know, looking at the driver's ed cars when their leases become up, as well as looking at some other solutions. And so we can certainly explore those with the...
Nothing submitted on this, correct?
Nothing submitted on the electricity contract. This is the second read. The contract language has been approved by legal counsel. It's the existing contract language that we currently have. As of last Thursday, the price change was very minimal, and so there's not a significant difference in price since the first read. Certainly, if this got approved tonight, I would look to secure those rates tomorrow morning. And so the administration is, is seeking approval on this. This would approximately save the district a minimum of $10,000 next year. That's just a very conservative estimate, in addition to future savings as well.
I have, I do have a quick question. Is it, and I realize it may be too late, because I should have asked the question, but is it possible to debate this item with the stipulation that, and I think it would, you know, it would change the, the numbers a bit, but I think I asked at the last board meeting, you know, you can negotiate for a, for a, for a premium, that this power would be provided by renewable energy sources? Is that still possible, or is that too late?
The cost estimate that I got and presented to the board at the last meeting was that, if we're comparing, going with a green energy source compared to our current costs, that that would increase the cost by $12,000 a year. So I would need some direction for the board, as to which direction. But that was the cheapest option that IGS was able to provide us.
So the $12,000 would trump the $10,000 savings and end up costing us $2,000 more, is that accurate?
That, that, that increase was from our current price.
So I think if we were gonna look at renewable energy, we'd probably want to bring that up as a new, a new item, and look at that as a whole program, kind of like, almost like a paradigm shift.
I think Tom's point is you would, you would put that in this contract.
Yeah.
And it would change the, you would, you'd have. We wouldn't, the savings of the $10,000 or $12,000, you know, would be offset. I think that's your, that, that's what you wanted to pay, we'd have to...
That's what I just said, right? So like, instead of saving us $10,000, it would cost us $2,000, correct?
It wouldn't be another...
If it was $12,000 increase?
We wouldn't want to sign this contract without signing it with a new deal.
It would, it would be a bigger swing than that, because we're looking at saving the district $10,000 versus from where we currently are, spending $12,000 more. So it would be, it would be a much bigger swing. You know, if, if that's the direction the board would want to go, then I would say we would, we would, we should just continue with our existing contract. We're in the second year of a three-year contract. And then explore, right, lose the, lose the savings that I'm proposing for next year and future, and then, you know, we could go out to market for, for green alternatives. It is my understanding that that, that would cost the district more. So, you know, if that's something the board is interested in, we can certainly pursue it. But I would need direction from the board, one way or another.
So a quick point of clarification. This savings, is it anticipated in the budget we just adopted? I could not remember if it was in a projected expenditure. It is not, okay.
So if we have the opportunity to save $10,000 for this year, it might be, might behoove us to do that and start discussing what this would look like, you know, going out for renewable sources or something, because that's a little more conversation.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, you know, they, I don't know what anybody else's appetite is, but the reason I bring it up is that, you know, we have been doing this for as long as electricity exists. We have been burning sources that emit CO2 and basically pollution that, and because this is the school, when we actually teach economics, this has been deemed as an externality, like there is no cost to it. So while I understand that this would add dollars, and this is a very difficult time to talk about not saving dollars because of the overall position we're in, but when I look at the news and I see, you know, both coasts under hurricanes and wildfires and so forth, I just think, for me, I cannot vote in favor of this, because I find personally, we have to do it now. We're running out of time. So this is a type of issue where, you know, I totally get it. I mean, we have to save money. There is a $1.6 million deficit, no question. But I cannot in good conscience vote for something where there is a better solution and not say, now is the time to do it. That's why I'm bringing it up.
But I just don't think we've had enough conversation or presentation. I don't think we're prepared to make that shift.
I think we need to, I think we need to talk about a whole plan. That is probably something we need to do in the Facility Subcommittee, you know, advisory is, what is a, what is an initiative to move? You know, what is, what does that look like in five years? What does it look like in 10 years? And I think, I think we can really, you know, move us in the right direction. You know, I, I'm a big fan.
Like, by having an overall plan and not just on this one issue, right?
Yeah, an overall strategy. It would be, you would have, you, you know, this, this might add us, I mean, it might add us 10, $10,000 or $12,000. But then, then we could also, and one of the other things I suggested is that we also, you know, we did some groundwork, some infrastructure, so we could put in electric chargers in the parking lot when we built the parking lot. Then we could go to a green initiative on our driver's ed cars and have, you know, EV charging. And we could do, what could we do on, on our, on our new fancy roof, right? I've been talking about that for years, but is it a, is it a wind turbine? What does that look like? Is that, is that part of a net metering process that we could get to? And what is that, is that gonna, maybe that's the $10,000, right? So I think in, in an overall strategy, we could look at it as, as, as multiple pieces moving forward. But I think, right now, we kind of gotta save $10,000 bucks.
Well, I think the, the discussion you're talking about is not a one-month discussion. It's a pretty lengthy, in-depth...
Yeah, it's something that we would build in the, in a, in a Subcommittee, in a, not a Sub, I don't want to say Subcommittee.
Advisory.
Advisory, you know, in the Facility Advisory, along with the, with the administration and Joel. He's a big part of that, because he'd have to manage just about all of that that we would do. That goes back to, you know, and, and part of that, we needed to add the, you know, we did some things when we built, you know, the lighting for the tennis courts. I think those qualify. You know, we've got a whole strategy on the building we're already doing with the...
We've got a lot accomplished with the lighting and...
Yeah, we saved about $50,000 a year in just swapping out all the light fixtures.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so where, when, when does that, I mean, we haven't seen that $400,000 move from $400,000 in four years, so. So I would question, I don't know if we saved any money. We're paying the same. So they're, they're, though we're supposed to, you know, that's where I think we gotta dig in and say, is it? It's nice to say that's saving us money. I'm okay being green. I think that's the right way to go, but it, it, you know, if it does save us, then we've got the 12 to spend on the renewable energy, so.
So I think we should take action and call to vote on this?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to stop the vote on this, because I think, I think it's the right thing to do in the, for the next year, next, what was, it's the next three-year contract, right? thing to do in the, for the next year, next was, it's the next three-year contract, right?
Uh, it goes through 2025, I believe.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's my only point. You know, we're talking about 2025. We have 10 years to figure out whether humanity has a future. And that sounds crass and you may not agree with, with that assessment, but my point is we have done all the right things by changing to fluorescents and low wattage and all of that. So that savings is, you know, I mean, if you were just to look at that in its own right, yes, so here, buying it from renewable sources, that, we look at that as an expense, just, if I narrow in on this, but overall, we're doing really well.
We could come back and reevaluate this, right? They'll take more money from us, I'm sure.
Sure. I mean, there's provisions and how to get out of a contract, and so, you know, we would need to weigh those at that point.
And how, how do we get out of this one with the three, second year, three years?
Well, let's, let's, I think we're putting a carpet for horse. I think we will get this issue and then we got to put together a plan like you're saying.
So I think we should vote on it unless we have some more discussion on the actual contract.
Kristen, all the updates from legal have been provided. You're in a good place?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the motion?
Yes.
Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the electricity contract with Interstate Gas Supply, Inc. as presented in the September 22nd, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
We would need a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ruska.
We need the roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mary Ann?
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Ailis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Yes.
Liability Insurance, so we have no update at this time. We did receive some initial information. We're working closely with Ms. Ailis and Mr. Durkin. Mr. Durkin's putting in some additional time, really looking at the documents, and we have an advisory council meeting this week, and I would anticipate some direction from that council at the October board meetings. Is that fair to say, Mr. Durkin?
Yeah, I think, hopefully by the first October meeting, but no later than the second.
Okay.
We're waiting on one of the cooperatives to provide the new rates for the upcoming year. So they gave us rates based on what they're today during this 12-month contract ending at the end of the year. So they haven't formally negotiated their renewal rates with all the different carriers that they have in the pool yet. So due to the size of the pool, I would expect that their renewal offers and rates should be firmed up sometime first few weeks of October.
Okay.
But that's out of our control and it's just kind of a wait-and-see type of thing. But I, I think Kristen's done a great job in vetting out and looking at all the different vendors. I feel we're in a good spot, you know, that we looked at all possible options and I think we'll be in a good spot in a month.
Come October?
Yeah.
Ms. Ailis, anything?
No, I think you did a good job summarizing.
Okay.
Matters to close, personnel to say our lease of property, collective negotiation, school safety. This is another chance for visitor statements.
None.
Don't see any visitors. Discussion items requested. Don't have any of those. Consideration for items for future meetings. Up to the side, side, and then closed session. Read the motion.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, purchase, sale or lease of real property, collective negotiations and school safety.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ailis. Mary Ann?
Roll call, right?
Ms. Sierra?
Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes.
Ms. Ailis?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Liability Insurance, so we have no update at this time. We did receive some initial information. We're working closely with Ms. Ailis and Mr. Durkin. Mr. Durkin's putting in some additional time, really looking at the documents, and we have an advisory council meeting this week, and I would anticipate some direction from that council at the October board meetings. Is that fair to say, Mr. Durkin?
Yeah, I think, hopefully by the first October meeting, but no later than the second.
Okay.
We're waiting on one of the cooperatives to provide the new rates for the upcoming year. So they gave us rates based on what they're today during this 12-month contract ending at the end of the year.